Okay, there we go. Ready to get started. A couple of minutes late here. Got a big agenda tonight, right? A lot of things on the regular agenda, so a lot of work to do. So I'd like to welcome everyone here to the chambers. Appreciate you taking time to come out for this meeting. The first thing I'm going to do is call this meeting of the Kalamazoo City Commission to Order for Monday, July 15th, 2024, and our first order of business is roll call. Clerk Borley.
Commissioner Cooney.
President.
Commissioner Decker.
President.
Commissioner Hoffman.
President.
Commissioner Pradel.
President.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you, Clerk Borley, and it's great to see everybody. It's very nice to have Commissioner Decker back with us. Had some serious family issues he had to deal with, and I'm really, really glad that you're back. I know we all are, so. Yes, full crew here again this evening. Well, we are blessed here for our opening ceremony to have our invocation be provided by Pastor Sanchita Kisku, who is from the First Baptist Church of Kalamazoo, and I'm going to ask her to come forward here and just remind people that for the invocation, I will ask people to stand and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome. Thank you.
Psalm 19. "The heaven are telling the glory of God, and the doom proclaims his handy work; day to day pour forth speech, and night to night declares knowledge." Let's pray. We pray tonight as God calls us to serve the city of Kalamazoo. That is honoring us and all the mayors and the representative in this power. So we pray that you would be glorified tonight through the decisions of the city council. We pray that we would be, have the eyes to see how our lives are all connected and how our common good is upheld when we listen and respond to those most vulnerable among us. We pray that your kingdom would come in Kalamazoo, as it is in heaven, through your power working in each of these, your servant that you have called us. May your truth be revealed, may your light shine brighter, may the voices of those most silent be heard loud and clear. Defense this cause, O God, through the governing body tonight. We pray for your wisdom, for strength, and courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we put the interest of others above our own. We thank you once again for this council, our mayor, our city staff, our first responder, our hospital and healthcare, and all the volunteer who are felt called this place as their own home. We ask in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you once again, Pastor. Next is the adoption of our formal agenda, and we do have a fair number of items, not as many as in the past, but on our consent agenda, commissioners, are there any items on the consent agenda you would like to have moved to the regular agenda? All right, seeing none, is there anyone here in the chambers that would like to move anything from G, the consent agenda, to H, the regular agenda? All right, seeing no one, we'll move ahead with the agenda as it stands. Manager Risma.
No communications, Your Honor.
All right, thank you so much. Now is the opportunity for public comments. Just as a reminder, there is an opportunity for public comments on specific agenda items that are on the regular agenda. So if you look at Virginia, we actually have 10 regular agenda items this evening, and anyone in the audience who's here on any particular one of those items will have an opportunity to speak to that item during that time. Not to say you couldn't do it twice and come up now, but just a reminder that that will be the opportunity to speak on a specific topic if you so desire. But now is an opportunity for anyone who would like to come forward. You'll have three minutes. Please state your name, whether they live in the city.
I was expecting a long line. My name is Ray Sweeney. I do live in the city of Kalamazoo, and I'm a member of First United Methodist Church, and it's that hat I wear in addressing you here today. I assume you're following the Gazette and some of the stories that have been appearing recently about housing. The people who are on disability have an income that is barely enough to house them, let alone feed them and get health care. Those people who are living paycheck to paycheck, it's this whole class of Alice people who are working but don't have the resources. Every once in a while, they end up getting a notice from either consumers or their landlord that suggests that it's time to pay up or get out or lose your services. So this, we have a phone line. We call it helping our neighbors, and it's, people get referred to it by either 211 or anybody, caseworker or something like that, or word on the street. However it comes, we get a phone call, and it is logged into a net-to-phone system where we get a transliteration of the message, and we will call them back. Today, I had 19 to call between the hours of 10:00 and 12:00. And it's something of a hemorrhage going on right now, and I wanted you to be alert to that fact. Earlier, I wrote to our congregation, a note, and told them about what we had done so far in this current fiscal year up to May 30th, or May 31st. And we got phone calls, 133 people calling who needed assistance for eviction. And when we act, it is because there is a demand for possession or some ability to establish the price that will make them whole. And so we set that as the goal, and I pledge typically $200 to them, which we will pay in cash to the landlord when there's sufficient funds to make them whole. For consumers, likewise, they will get a shut-off notice, and there is a price tag for getting them made whole. That is to say, either completely debt-free or alternatively, at least getting the lights to stay on reliably. And so we've helped 167 people in that category, or nearly...
That is your three minutes, yes. Yes, thank you. You can give them to the clerk. Sure, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, please.
Hello, Commission. I want to thank Commissioner Cooney for bringing up the Alice statistics in the previous meeting, the Economic Development Strategy meeting, and Commissioner Hoffman as well for bringing up the equity and share prosperity, and Commissioner Wilson for bringing up the climate crisis as well. And one important thing that I heard in this meeting was about, you know, the housing development, right? Multi-family homes, and I think this is the same narrative that the Governor Whitmer is also trying to portray, talking about more housing development, more housing development. I think the important thing here is addressing the issues within housing, right? It's a historic moment in Michigan. There's eight different housing bills currently in battle in our local government in Michigan. And we met with the Deputy Policy Director Zoe Ulström. Forty of us, organizers from We the People, Kalamazoo, and statewide, Detroit Action, and the rent is too damn high. And one important thing we noticed is that a lot of the politicians are not aware of these bills, and there's a lot of hostility when it comes to grassroots organizers trying to highlight these issues, right? About eviction, how people can just be evicted for no reason, how the rent can go up higher for no reason, all these issues within the housing that affect renters, right? It's the landlords, and we have to start addressing this in this political climate about not everybody having the community in mind. And we know that when the community organizes, that benefits, that benefits policies, that benefits the government. It's time to trust the people. It's time to really see what is being, the narratives that are being put out there for rent stabilization efforts, for, you know, income discrimination policies, and really start, not rocking the boat, but really start addressing the realities that are happening, especially with the Alice community, with the climate crisis, with shared prosperity. It's impossible to share prosperity and to really address anything if the rent is too damn high in Kalamazoo, and it's only gotten increased since COVID, right? It shouldn't be like that. It shouldn't be where landlords are predatory, where there's not equity in what people are paying versus their income. If people are paying 50% or more of their income to rent, that means that they're not making ends meet. They're not buying, they're not being able to afford food, medical expenses, build wealth, which is very important to build wealth and pass that on. So I want you all to challenge politicians, challenge the people that you talk to every day to really...
Thank you. Next, please.
Good. Hey, everyone. Good to see you guys. Wish it was on better circumstance. My name is Paul Petros. I am one of the co-owners of Midtown Fresh Market. I'm here with the concerns of the construction that started about two and a half months ago over on West Nidge Hill, coming down Cork Street. It is killing my business. We're down 20% to 25% right now, and it's unsustainable. We came into this community as a food desert, me and our sister store, Parshy Market, and right now it looks like a war zone. It looks like we've been abandoned. You know, our leader, commander, has gone. We're on our own, and this is not fair. It's not right. And I understand, I hate to be frustrated because I pride myself on hard work and customers will come, but it's almost impossible to get to the stores at this point. We're sending people north to go south, south to go west, east to, it's just a debacle. I don't like it. I hate to be a complainer, but something has to be done. Someone has to be held accountable. So I'm here. I'm asking for help, financial help, not signage. I don't want signage. I don't want advertising. I've been doing business for almost 23 years. That's not how it works. You need access to your stores. I'm here to ask for what we lost. We lost our customers. We lost our time. We lost our money. We've laid off about 10 people so far, and if it stays like this, it's just going to keep going that way. And I don't know if we're even going to be here when it's all done. I understand we want the arena. I understand we want all these nice things. It's great, but at what expense? You know, and that's not fair that we come in here. I'm not alone. There's, you know, there's hundreds of local businesses that are feeling the same way as I do. So we're asking for financial support. Something has to be done, turning other streets into two-way streets, easy, accessible ways to get to us. What about first responders, fire departments? What about emergencies, getting to the hospital? It's a debacle. It's bad. You know, and I'm just asking for somebody to step up and start leading and doing the right thing. You know, you guys have all the resources. Get them together. How can they help us? You know, because all these small businesses here that are going to come up here and complain, everything's on the line. It's not just employees. It's everything. There's thousands of employees from White's Road all the way down to the North Side. Thousands, hundreds of businesses, thousands of employees are affected. Just in my plaza alone, it's 125 people, maybe more. You know, we have a senior Oak Street Center in there that has seniors that have to get access to us. Guys, we need help. I hate to ask this way, but this is the only thing I can do right now, or I'm going to allow my employees down. You know, and I know some of your faces. You guys come in the store, and I really appreciate that, but you understand how difficult it is, especially leaving work. I lost all my after-work customers, and I know where they're all going, right? The Myers, Portage, and that's embarrassing. You know, so just some accountability. You guys, give us some resources, give us some help, whatever you can do. Really appreciate it, guys. Bless you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Maddie Jordan Woods. I live at 902 West Patterson. I received calls from Park Street Market and them asking me to come up and again state to the commission how it isn't just that they are losing business. It is also that they're unable to pay their employees. And if they're unable to pay their employees, we're going to have even more people who are homeless. Because if they can't get paid, then they can't pay their rent. So I hope that the city, and I know that you are, and I just want to do a shout-out to James Baker because he's done everything possible to try and get people to the store to make it easier. He rode around with me one day. He opened up the heart connects alley. But what they are saying to me is that that's not enough because they're payroll at $20,000 a week, and yet you can't get people to the store, that they need a different type of help. I don't know how you can do it. I know that this commission loves them. They love the stores and everything. Then my last thing, because I got one minute. I want to thank the Kalamazoo Public Library for having their community meeting. They came in. They told us what they were going to do. They also committed to building another power. They admitted that they had did harm to our community, so I just want to do a shout-out to them, thank them for what they're doing. And there are several of us who are still working to bring that library back to the North Side by the people who need it the most. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Washington. I'm Executive Director for the North Side Association for Community Development, which is located on 612 North Park Street. We hold monthly meetings on the third Tuesday of every month where residents are able to come as their open meetings. So I'm here today as an advocate, sharing with you the concerns that were brought to me or to our board. First is Park Street Market. I'm in a conversation with K R. Sales are down 40%, losing $150,000 per month. That's the profit margin that helps cover the rent, payroll, utilities, and others, other operational costs. 60% of the employees in Park Street Market live on the North Side, an already marginalized community, 60%. So that impact on our residents is huge. The current weekly payroll is $20,000. There's an inventory of over 300,000 imperishables, and he will be losing about 40% of that. And then the other major impact is, once people start changing their shopping patterns, it can be real hard to get them to shift back. This is the only grocery store on the North Side. It is something that was supported by the city of Kalamazoo in its creation. And so in that last presentation, that idea of a contingency fund during construction, boy, that would have been really helpful for this very important grocery, both the Park Street and Midtown Fresh, which are owned by a family who is committed to making sure there's groceries in these underserved neighborhoods. My next couple of things that were brought to us were the X-trains and water pellet guns, and I wanted to thank Chief Boyson for attending our meeting tomorrow to be able to talk directly to the residents about it, but wanted to make sure you knew they were concerned. Third, there are houses and lots owned by the city and other organizations that are blighted or not being taken care of. Thank you for Cheryl and Parsons came and presented at our previous board meeting to talk about that a little bit more, in particular, the Lawrence Florence Street corridor. And then finally, there are various streetlights out and/or that need an upgrade to the LED lighting. So they're the soft yellow light where, in essence, the brighter light would be safer for the neighborhood, more walkable in those early dusk hours. So those were the four items, and again, I want to thank the city directors that have been working with us. In addition, Director Baker will be attending the board meeting tomorrow as well to talk directly to the community. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention, even though this...
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Maria Brennan. I'm a co-owner of the Victorian Bakery. We're a family-run business. I'm sorry. In the last three weeks, our business has been reduced by 50%. For the last four years, we've had to have an emergency plan to operate. First came COVID. Next, the road closures due to infrastructure upgrades. Last year, we dealt with Park Street being closed with courthouse construction and then a closure at the railroad crossing. I went to the meetings with the city and Consumers Energy to see what was being done to mitigate the traffic diversion and timelines on the construction. At the last meeting with Consumers Energy present, which was, I believe, last October, I asked, is this the last upgrade required for the new arena? The answer was yes. Yet here we are the following year with another set of road closures, and basically, it has basically boxed out the normal traffic that comes to us on three sides. And for what you might ask, more infrastructure upgrades by Consumers Energy for the arena. We were told five weeks. Last Thursday, they sent a spokesperson who told us he was way down the totem pole in the decision-making process, but that the road was not going to be reopened at the end of five weeks. I was just absolutely gobsmacked. They're going to open one lane. Of the four main roads into downtown Kalamazoo, two have restricted flow that lane closures. And the other two, West Nidge Avenue and Park Street, are totally closed in one or more places with detours. Now the detours have road closures such as Douglas Street and Rose Street. Did anyone coordinate these road closures? I did some research and found out there are 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. That's equal to 99.9% of all businesses in the U.S. The backbone of the U.S. economy is built on small businesses. Yet what I'm seeing in this downtown project is catering to 1/10 of 1% in such a way as to destroy the supplemental businesses that provide goods and services to the population as a whole. We all claim to be small business friendly, yet at every turn, we've proven that we're unfriendly except to nonprofits in town. How does this increase our tax base to provide for the long-term vibrant and healthy economy in Kalamazoo? Each small business creates jobs. This means homes filled with families that pay tax into the tax system, mortgages that get paid and support our banks, and children that live here and families that spend money locally. What in God's name made anyone associated with this project think it was okay to do this in such an uncoordinated manner? Unfortunately, there is very little information being given by the city that would cause anyone to think that the decision-makers are truly being misinformed.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adam Knott. I'm a resident of the Edison neighborhood, and I'm coming here to talk about the construction and how it's hurting Midtown Fresh and Park Street Market. I've been a loyal customer of both locations, especially when I purchase the proteins that we have in our house. I can't get a better deal anywhere else. The staff is always friendly, and the products are just, they're wonderful. I'm upset because I did a little bit of research today, and Midtown Fresh pays $130,000 a year in property taxes. $130,000. And as we heard tonight, they have to move product. As K R said, you know, it's about $300,000 a week. I don't know what the numbers are for Park Street. I don't know what it is for Midtown, but since it's a bigger location, I'm guessing it's more. But let's just use that as a baseline. That's $120,000 a week that's going bad if they don't move it, on top of just over $10,000 a month in property taxes they have to accrue for annually, on top of payroll, on top of... On top of payroll, on top of paying the interest on credit lines. And if they're not getting customers, if they're not turning that inventory over, we're gonna be back to where we were when I moved back to the city in 2008. I remember Felposh over on the North Side. Do we want them to move down to Portage or go out to Oshtemo? This construction, I understand, it's a five to seven-year planning process. I understand that it, you know, with budgets that you have to use it or lose it. I don't know where these funds are coming from. But come on, our detours have detours. I mean, I, you know, my late grandmother would say you have to cross your butt to get to your elbow to get to these stores. Luckily, on Sundays, I'm able to do that when there's, right after Mass. And these guys, Kiara, his brother-in-law and his brother Tom, they do so much for the community. But they're losing money right now, and there's only so much perishables they can donate. You know, in, in the fall at Thanksgiving, they helped my Knights of Columbus Council out by giving us a good deal on turkeys, turkey breasts that we distribute to those in need over on the East Side and part of the North Side. If they go away, I don't know who else I'm gonna go to. So all I'm asking is finish one road at a time and maybe look for some compensation on their property tax. Cut them a break. Find some way-
Thank you, next please.
Hi, my name is Tina, I live on Lake Street. We have already flooded twice this year already, and we're probably gonna flood again tonight. Now you have all these detours going around all over the place. And now you're gonna close Balt Street, which is off of Park Street. So when we flood, that's the only street that we have to get to Burdick Street. So how are we supposed to get home? Can't go down Balt, can't go down Maple, can't go down Bronson Boulevard, can't go down White's Road. I feed the kids at Alamo Hills apartment, Foxridge. So we have to detour all the way down to Level Street from Shendry Auditorium to try to get back to Foxridge to feed the kids. And, and every day, there's another one popping up. Come on, guys, finish one road at a time. It takes me 25 minutes to get to work and it should only take me seven minutes to get to DNW from my house. This construction is getting to be ridiculous, I agree with everybody about that. But when are you gonna do something about this flooding? You need to leave that little green space. If you tear that green space down, you will be purposely flooding all the homeowners out. And then when you build the Hawthorne project, it's gonna be higher than our homes. So everybody on Stockbridge that has homes will flood too. It won't just be us, you will be flooding out other people. It's time to fix the infrastructure in the city. And I'm not talking about the water lines. I'm talking about the sewers, I'm talking about the storm drains. The last two times we flooded, the pictures I showed you, it's just the storm drains flooding out the streets. Does that tell you that something's wrong with them? And by the way, your one over on Forest Street is all filled with junk again. I cleaned it out again, but I'm quite sure it's back full again, cause it just flooded too. It's really sad when you own a home for 38 years and all of a sudden, ever since you guys got up here, now we flood all the time ever since you took away 12 acres to build KVCC. And you didn't think twice, cause you didn't fix the infrastructure before you added more water to the area that already has a high water table. And where do you get our drinking water from? The groundwater. Where does the sewer go? It backs up into the streets when the storm drains flood, and then the sewer water backs up into the groundwater, which you purify and you make the residents of Kalamazoo drink the groundwater. That's where our water comes from. It's time to fix this problem, guys, it's been seven years. I shouldn't have to pack a bag and run and find somewhere to stay. I have to go to Portage and stay in the senior apartment building tonight, because we're gonna flood. And I can't, gotta get out, I gotta go to work, I gotta pay bills, I gotta pay my taxes, gotta pay my water bill, which my taxes went up again too. I mean, come on, guys, you're hurting everybody in Kalamazoo with your big projects, that you don't consolidate anybody.
Thank you. Next please.
I'm gonna stick to my notes. My name is Forrest Buffenbauer, I'm the store manager of Gazelle Sports right downtown. First off, positive, thank you for your service, thank you for your commitment to our community. But I, just like many other businesses, have come here to talk about the construction. Just this summer, we're down 10%, both in overall dollars, but then also in transactions. So the amount of customers just are not coming down. And that is including a fantastic job by Jess promoting us on social media. Due to the numbers, being so far down, I've had to cut my hours, I've had to cut payroll significantly. Roughly 120 hours per week, which is a lot for my employees. I hire a lot of university students and the summer is the time for them to get hours so that they can then go to university and not have to worry about working as much. I've worked downtown for the past decade, and this summer has been by far the hardest summer to navigate construction. It's a given, it's Michigan, we're gonna have construction in summer, that's, that's just how it goes. But there's seemingly no way around it. As many people have said, there's detour to detour to detour. And there's really not great signage, there's not big, bold areas that tell you where to go, how to get downtown, how to get from business to business. Now, I'm not a traffic engineer nor a construction worker, so I don't claim to know any answers, and this is all from my perspective. But like I said, I've been here for a little while, living downtown. And it's, it's hard, when I see a, a street get shut down, torn up in one day, and then no one has touched it for two weeks. It shows me that there's not a coordination, there's not a collaboration between these companies, whether it's construction companies or consumers. We need that collaboration, we need some coordination to enable a street to be shut down and then to be back up before 20 others get closed and then not worked on. I also live in a one-way, and that one-way, just this, this summer, I have seen probably tenfold, if not a hundredfold, more cars going down the wrong way. That is a massive safety hazard. And it happens every day, probably 10 to 20 cars a day. Ultimately, my ask comes down to better signage, both detour signage, but then also if there's anything that the city can do to promote us downtown businesses, to, to get in front of the public and let them know that we're here and that we care about them. We're the small businesses that give back to the community. A lot of these big businesses aren't doing that, and we care about our community, we care about our people, just like all of you. We want, we want them back, we want them to be able to come down and not be frustrated. With that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Stephen Frizzano, I'm manager of the Ace Hardware at 1685 Southwest Edge, which is right next to Midtown Fresh and next to Oak Street Health. And it's very difficult, I, I can probably count more of, of the people that don't come in and complain about getting there than do. And my, my foot traffic in the store is down 20%. We have had to reduce staff at night because we don't have enough people coming into the store. And yet, trying to run a store like that, a hardware store with only two people in the evening, is very difficult. The, when you look at, the Crosstown Parkway is, is now closed, and we have people that are having to come, if they're trying to get over in that neighborhood, they have to go across the gas station at Johnny's and, and up through the parking lot to get out to Howard Street. It's, it's just untenable. And I understand that before too long, they're going to be closing Howard Street. That's, that's gonna be very difficult because people from coming up the hill, up Howard, from Oakland, for example, or somewhere up in that neck of the woods, it's gonna be very difficult for them to get across. Right now, the signage, I live in Millwood, and the signage to try to get to Midtown Fresh or my store is terrible. There are little bitty signs, about so big. And they're, they're blue signs with small writing that say Ace Hardware, Midtown Fresh, Oak Street Health. And, you know, nobody can really tell where these things are. And there's only like three of them in the whole area. So it, it would help if we had some signage, it would help if they could, like for example, Crosstown, I don't see anybody actually working on that intersection. I'm not an engineer, but is there some way that they could open that intersection so that people don't have to drive through a gas station to get up where they need to go? When they close Howard Street, that's gonna be another real big problem for us. So I'd appreciate anything that could be done, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening.
Thank you very much, next please.
So good evening, I appreciate all of you and your service. I'm Tony Kennedy, I live in Kalamazoo Township, but I serve and come down to Kalamazoo City to do business. And I'd like to talk about parking. Actually, I didn't realize the gravity of what I was concerned about when I heard everyone today, Midtown Fresh, and I, and they have always been kind enough to let me put a table down there for the Y, or doing volunteer activities, et cetera. So I'm really saddened to hear about that. But then on top of everything else, all the rest of the chaos that's happening in the city, now we want to increase parking rates. I walked today, I tried to go early, but work didn't, work got in the way. But I walked down the mall, and I asked the businesses, myself, because everybody always has an opinion about something. And I wanted to know from them, I told them who I was, I said I'm a community member and I wanted to hear their voices on what's going on and how do they feel about the parking. And so the majority of them said that with all the chaos, and then now the parking, that they're already losing 20% of their businesses. One said that they're losing 50% of their businesses, business monies, et cetera. And so I really don't see the value right now with all the chaos that we have right now going on with construction, how you're going to add insult to injury and increase parking rates. I did read most of the report. I got it yesterday late and read most of it. You know, I saw where we're putting in guest parking spaces for some of the housing projects, et cetera, that we have. So, I mean, I get it, I understand that there might be a need to pay for all the chaos that we have, that we're living with. There's a lot of people, including my husband, who does not want to come down to Kalamazoo. And we used to frequent the city of Kalamazoo, just to go do different activities and different things. I am asking you, as a community member, as a veteran, as a friend, as a, a community person, to please at least reconsider increasing your parking pricing until you can get a handle on some of the chaos that you have got going on in the city right now. Because if I don't understand it, and the majority of your constituents don't understand it, I really don't think it's fair. I really appreciate your time and I wish you a good evening.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Hello, my name is Vince Laveri, I am a resident of Kalamazoo. I'm on a home over on Minor Street. And all of the things people have been talking about, traffic, I'm not here. First time I've been here, talk about traffic, which everybody else has addressed eloquently. I am just stunned, angered that there is a proposal to put parking meters downtown and to raise the rates. The BS excuse I'm hearing about meters is that somebody read in a, in a best practice book, not a best practice for Kalamazoo, but a best practices for generic communities out there somewhere, is to put meters in. I have a hard time picturing people sitting at home and saying, oh honey, look, they, they put meters in and they're raising the rates, let's go downtown and shop. That's not going to happen. I am downtown at least three times a week, during the week, not weekends. I love our downtown, I need to go there, talking, shopping, visiting, eating. If there, I have never had a problem finding a parking spot. Sometimes I gotta go around the block twice, but I always find a parking spot. If there's people who are parking there too long, then your solution is parking enforcement. And I'm surprised that we have anybody parking there too long because Kalamazoo's always been good at giving tickets. When I first moved to Kalamazoo in 91, I learned that Kalamazoo will just as soon ticket you as look at you. So you put meters in, you're still gonna have to enforce that, right, if that's gonna work? So we, we already have enforcement, put the enforcement in. And I do not want to hear stories about the parking garage is a wonderful solution. It's not. And I invite you to go down to the parking garage. Everything is on a slant. So if you're somebody in a wheelchair, on a walker, or with a cane, you're gonna get out and you're gonna have to deal with a slant. The concrete cutaways where you would put, go with a wheelchair or a walker to get to the elevators that are placed in our places are not wide enough. So you could, you can get a wheelchair walker through, you're gonna have to be pushing people down, and God forbid pushing people up. My time is up, I just, please-
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, thank you Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Hassan, all the commissioners. My name is Tom Gamshoe, and I'm gonna represent Park Street Market. I also work at Midtown Fresh, but I, we established Park Street Market 15 years ago. And I'm just, I'm just frustrated, frustrated, and I hear it from my customers. I'm doing everything in my power, the managers, Paul Petros runs Midtown Fresh, Kiara Gamshoe runs Park Street Market, and I'm helping out. Customers, I get, I get 10 to 15 calls a day of customers trying to figure out how they can come to the store. It's like, it's, it's, it's a game, it's like we're playing Tetris here. I, I don't know what to say to them. I tell them, okay, go to this street, go to that street, go east, go west, go south, go north. And the frustrating part about it is, they are loyal customers that have been shopping at Park Street Market for 15 years and at Midtown Fresh for six years. And they don't want to go anywhere else, they don't want to go to Myers or Walmart. And they want to, they want to support us. But it's, it's hard for them, they, they don't have the access to get to my businesses. And, and I have to, I, I don't know what to say, I, I'm just really frustrated. I have customers from Battle Creek, I have over 100 families from Battle Creek that drive 35 to 40 minutes to shop at Park Street and Midtown Fresh. And they're calling me, telling me that they can't, they, they don't want to come because they don't want to deal with a headache. I'm not, I'm, I'm, I know I'm complaining and I'm venting. I know you guys have your hands full out there with what's going on. I'm here to help, what can we do as small businesses to help you guys out, figure out this problem? You know, I'm not asking for a handout, but we didn't create this problem. We need some type of either tax breaks or financial compensation, media campaign to help support us small businesses. And, you know, I heard through the grapevine that one of the businesses in Kalamazoo had an issue, and you guys helped them out financially, I'm not gonna name any names, but you guys helped them out financially back in the day. And I, you know, I, it's just a big mess. And I hear it from my customers, and I try to, I try to give them a solution, give them an answer, but sometimes there is no answer. And we are paying hundreds of thousands of dollars in property taxes at Midtown Fresh. Not only that, I'm losing on shrinkage. I'm throwing away thousands of dollars of meat every week. My produce, I'm donating it to- My produce, I'm donating it to Lowe's and Fisher's, but they only can take so much. They only can take so much. You know, besides shrinkage, I have to let go of some employees. I have 120 employees, and I let go of 10 employees in the last three months, and it's frustrating. And something's gotta be done. I have a single mother that's been working for me for six years, that lives on the North Side, she works at Midtown Fresh. It takes her an hour and a half to catch the bus to get to my business. Now she doesn't even want to come to work anymore because she just hasn't access to the store. It's frustrating. Please, no. I'm sorry, I'm angry, but I need you guys to help. And I know you guys have the solution to this. And I'm praying for all of you guys. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi, thank you. My name's John Talbot. I'm one of the owners for Crowsnest and Fourth Coast. I know you guys have heard a lot about the traffic, and I definitely agree with a lot of the concerns that have been mentioned of, you know, we're not just here speaking as owners, we're here to be the voice for our customers and our staff that this has been so challenging for. I think the, some of these challenges with the signage for detours is a really easy place where we could start. Right now, if we looked at it, it, all of the southbound traffic going down West Edge, leaving the city, is detoured into a neighborhood that there isn't even signs telling you how to get out. Everybody ends up at a stop sign that they're turning left onto a major street that it's dangerous, and the line gets very long. There's residents standing outside with signs trying to keep their kids safe. And something that I think could potentially be done that hasn't happened at all at my business, and I, I'm not sure if it's happened at anybody else's, but it would be great if the city had anybody come out and talk to us as business owners and try to come up with workable solutions for what these problems are, and get a better understanding of what's really happening for us at the ground level. I agree with the concerns about property taxes, which mine have gone up as well. And it, this is only making it more and more difficult to run businesses and have employees and, and serve the community as we're all trying to do. Having no detour signs and having roads that are detoured onto detours and all of these turn lanes that have disappeared, and now there're cones and no one can turn, it, it's making it so challenging for anybody to get to a business. I also have people call every day asking just how do I drive and get to where I'm trying to go to? And I have no answer for them in any way. I don't even have a resource that the city has provided, like a website or something that's on social media that's somewhat up to date. I know it's very challenging, and you guys are certainly doing the best that you can. And, you know, I don't see any orange vest or hard hat, so I know you guys aren't responsible for the work that's being done, but we're here to really plead for your help. Our sales are down, it hurts our staff, it hurts everybody, and, you know, one of the people that was up here said something about the change in habits as a consumer, and that's something I really agree in, that when people start going somewhere else, it's 10 times harder to get them to come back and change their habits. You know, we saw that happen with COVID, with the way that the whole world changed with how we bought things, how we ate, how we lived our lives. And this construction is forcing these same irreparable changes to happen to businesses that are institutions for Kalamazoo. Between just some of the businesses that have spoken so far, there's decades of history in the city that is gonna go away unless something is done in order to keep things going for the people that are here, that are working and just trying to help support Kalamazoo the same way that you guys are. I would love it if any of you would be able to go and what used to be a short drive to leave from here and drive to Victorian Bakery, drive to Crowsnest, and drive to Midtown Fresh, and come back here. I would challenge you to see how difficult and challenging and confusing that drive is today versus what it used to be. It isn't sustainable. We need your help.
Hello. My name is Eugenia Apewu, and I'm only three years old in Kalamazoo. I have moved three times. So my concern, and though you're talking about businesses as well, so I have a couple of things to talk about. My concern is I'm on disability, and there wasn't any safe place to live. Gun violence, shootout. I've moved three times. And now my rent is 80% of my disability money. What are we doing about it? I know somebody mentioned it briefly, so it's a concern for all of us, if some of us can make it. In speaking of that, as I try to be as new disabled, I take classes, so I hardly have any money to live on. Scholarship funds trying to tap in here and there. I'm a licensed massage practitioner for many years. It was car injury that brought me down. So I know of some marketing staff. I get on the case of the Art Council that my craft is also an art, because we all create. Finally, I had the opportunity to be at Art Hub last Friday. But a farmer's market, where people are, there's also healing. Farmers need stretch, they need healing and all that. But there's a policy, oh, we can't have you. You have the jewelers, you have other crafts, you have all these, but why can't therapists also be there to help them? That's my new business proposal or something that I need answers from. I don't know who to talk to directly. In speaking of that, coming to the parking situation, it's not even the parking. Last time, I almost got hit as a pedestrian. When you are even going to park, the way we are parking parallel, when you open your door and this street, the main street, I live downtown now, main street is narrowed to two. When you open your door, you can't even get to your car. And then the other side that should be more safer has been another, a bus or bicycles and all that. If we need concern, I'm from Niles area, but I saw Mayor Buttigieg, South Bend transformed the one way to two ways and all that. Plus the parking tickets and the meters that somebody also mentioned earlier could be addressed. Downtown, I don't want to be downtown. I would rather drive up if I can have a way quickly, or drive somewhere that I won't have to deal with. And so downtown businesses are hurting as well. I have the opportunity to meet the new bus, new equipment person, and then billboard person was also there.
Good evening to the chamber members and the citizen guests. President, my name's Austin Chinal, Portage resident, 49024. I'm the vice chair of the Southwest Chapter of Libertarian Party. We have a current nominee running the state representative, 41st District, Raphael Wolfe from Express IT Solutions. I'm also an advocate of Jeff Messer and the rank my vote, ranked choice voting initiatives you're likely familiar with. On the topic of financial literacy and personal corporate accounting, just a basic piece of advice, we recommend the city treasury that they should put up to, some of their investment portfolio up to 5% into Bitcoin or similar avenue to guarantee the future of the city treasury and protect it against monetary debasement from the federal government. This suggestion should also be of current valid timing due to the local federal and global CBDC initiatives, central bank digital currency. Basically, there are three current considerations due to the NGO Federal Reserve controlling the USD, recent petroleum-based dollar contract non-renewal with Saudi Arabia, upcoming BRICS nations currency reveal in fall 2024, re-advising the city and Kalamazoo and its residents to educate and enlighten themselves on validity of potential de-dollarization and other similar threats to both purchasing power and overall liquid value of assets. Please stop by our table on Friday, 11:00 AM to 1:30 PM, every lunchtime live at Bronson Park, located on South Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Have a great evening.
Hello, my name is Malam Tiyara. I'm the co-owner of Shore Makin' on West Edge. We were the first ones who got affected by the construction, and now our sales are like really down by 30 to 35%. There's families depending on that restaurant. There's employees, we cut their hours because we can't afford to pay them. And then I hope you guys will do something to end this, because you guys blocked the main road to get to the restaurant. And then now like a lot of people are calling us now, hey, how to get to the restaurant? Like we can't, we have no answer. And then like, like all the ways are, around the restaurant are blocked. And then I, I hope you guys will do something to end this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, please. All right, thank you. So I just want to take, thank everyone. Everyone that took the time and made the effort to come down here and let your voice be heard here to the city commission, I appreciate. I know that it is an extra burden to have to come and express this directly, but I think it's a powerful thing to do. So thank you so much. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda, city manager, Rizma.
We have nine items on the consent this evening. First is the approval of a one-year renewal of dark trace licensing from SHI International from the My Deal Cooperative Purchase Program in the amount of $149,876.22. Next is the approval of a professional service agreement with Jones and Henry Engineers for the F Avenue and 28th Street Water Main Design in the amount of $223,000. Next is the approval of an open term memorandum of understanding with the Road Commission of Kalamazoo County for sewer manhole replacements in an amount not to exceed $250,000 per fiscal year, and to authorize James J. Baker, P.E., as the authorized project representative. Next, the approval of a contract supplemental and change order with R.K. Davis for additional work items within the terms of the tertiary treatment project in the amount of $815,751.65. Next is the adoption of a resolution scheduling a public hearing for August 12, 2024, to receive comments on a request from 5135 Portage Road LLC to establish a commercial redevelopment district at 5135 and 5137 Portage Road. Next is the adoption of a resolution approving the 12th Amendment to the revised Brownfield Plan for the city of Kalamazoo. Next is the approval of a request from Western Michigan University to publicly display fireworks at Heims Field and Waldo Stadium on September 14 and November 6, 2024. Next, the approval of a purchase agreement with Douglas Alexander Neighbors for the purchase of 731 Pioneer Street and 737 Pioneer Street in the amount of $60,000. And finally, approval of the minutes from the city commission meetings on June 17, 2024.
Thank you, manager Rizma. So commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve items one through nine and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman.
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. Cook Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deckard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion passes for all items on the consent agenda. Now we're at the regular agenda, city manager Rizma.
Item H1 is adoption of a resolution approving the Westwood Neighborhood Plan 2024 as a sub-area plan to the 2025 master plan.
Thank you, manager Rizma. Is there a staff report? I see that there is.
Yes, we have our neighborhood activator, Jay Slavy, come, to come forward and give a brief presentation overview and answer any questions. Jay?
Thank you.
Welcome, Jay.
I'm also, thank you. I'm also with the president of the Westwood Neighborhood Association, Ron Huston. So he'll say a few words after me. Good evening, commission. I am really excited to bring the ninth and latest neighborhood plan to your attention and consideration of approval. It is the first neighborhood plan in which we look at multiple.
Somebody gonna check that out? Okay.
This is the first neighborhood plan where we're looking at multiple jurisdictions. Both the city and the township have areas of Westwood overlap, and what we wanted to do was connect with both bodies of residents that make up the Neighborhood Association to ensure that all needs are being represented through this neighborhood plan. So we worked with the planners of Kalamazoo Township since the first day to understand the economic development strategies we want to see along West Main Street Commercial Corridor, housing initiatives, environmental and sustainability efforts, and how we can continue to grow that relationship between the township and the city, and work on projects together and bring in investment and community partners to really implement some strong projects. We have 90 projects listed in this plan, over five goals of improved connectivity for all users, enhance the public realm, champion community building, promote a safe community, and foster a sustainable and resilient neighborhood. And of course, what we always do is look at how this aligns with the city's 10 strategic vision goals. In this situation, we also looked at the Kalamazoo Township's recent master plan that was approved this past year. And so we looked at how it aligned to their five goals, which were community image, housing and families, neighborhoods, land use and economic development, and sustainability and beautification. So I'm really excited to bring this forth to you, and Ron, would you like to say a few words on behalf of the neighborhood?
Welcome, Ron.
Thank you. Ron Huston, 1314 Coolidge Avenue. I've been president of the Westwood Neighborhood Association for seven years, and I really appreciate the effort that the city in general, and Jay in particular, have put forth in, in putting a plan together, because you can't know where you're going if you don't have a, a goal, you don't have a plan for it. The township works in some ways, and the city works in other ways, and it's amazing the job that Jay has done and, and the leadership of bringing the two together. As long as I've been in Westwood, which is more than 30 years, it's been a real discussion, and nobody knows who lives in the city, who lives in the township. Well, it shouldn't make any difference. We're all in the Kalamazoo area, and our goals are all the same. We had over 500 people at each of the two neighborhood or national night outs that we have done, and we had, you know, more people were from the township than the city. The township portion of Westwood is larger than the city portion of Westwood. But it's strange that all the information we got from the people, it didn't matter whether they lived in the township or the city, their goals and their expectations were the same. The township did a mailing to 3,000 people in the township, and the answers they got pretty much were the same. So we know what we need to work with, but we can't get tied down with this is township, this is city. We have to, we're, we're all here together to make life better for everybody. So I really appreciate the job and the time we've had with her and, and all the meetings and, and it, it's just been a, a real learning experience for me, because I don't do this.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that you attended this meeting.
Any questions?
Questions, commission? Commissioner Pradel?
Hey, Jay, thanks for being here tonight, and thank you, Ron, for, for being here as well. You know, I'm really interested to just kind of, well, I'll back up. I'm very proud, considering that the city side of, of Westwood is basically about a third of the neighborhood, right? About a third of the residents, about a third of the homes. And, and the city of Kalamazoo is taking the lead in uniting the neighborhood with this plan. I'm really curious to hear from either of your perspective, how did that work happen to, to kind of choreograph with the township? And how has that experience gone? Do you feel like there's been some adequate unity to, to make this plan move forward and to implement the plan?
You're exactly right. There's about nine, a little bit over 9,000 people in the Westwood Township area and about 3,000 in the city portion, so just a third, exactly what you just said. I think, I was really excited about the response, both from Kalamazoo County, from Ostromo Township, from the Kalamazoo Township planning staff, on their willingness to work with us and discuss these topics that range across economic development, sustainability, community building. This actually helped encourage Kalamazoo Township when looking at their master plan to include the goals around neighborhoods and really leveraging their distinct neighborhoods, Northwood, Lakewood, Eastwood, Westwood, and pretty much model what we do here in the city. How does that look like, what does that look like in the neighbor, across the township? So I think this is not the end, right? This is just a start. This is a plan, and now we have to implement it. So it's just beginning with. So it's just beginning with this wonderful opportunity to connect with staff, appointed officials on Planning Commission, et cetera, to work with one another on implementing this. And I think the power will lie within our partnerships. So, you know, welcome kits. Do we work with the Realtors Association to be able to identify new homeowners? Do we work with other nonprofits that have different relationships in different communities within the neighborhood to leverage that multifamily communities, all the apartments that we have in the Westwood neighborhood? How do we connect with students there, seniors? And how do we make them feel like they belong within the greater neighborhood of Westwood? So I think that there's so many opportunities there, we just need to, you know, really start, hit the ground running once this is approved, to then implement these 90 wonderful projects.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Other questions? Yes, Vice Mayor Hess.
Not so much, not so sure it's a question, but it's what I said to the Planning Commission. I, full disclosure, I'm a resident of Westwood, and therefore I'll be abstaining on this plan, because it could bring financial gain to the, the neighborhood. But my big gratitude to Jay and to, to Ron for spearheading all this and for helping work this out. One of the things that I said to the Planning Commission was that while Westwood City has city ideals, the schools that all the Westwood children attend are in the township. So the safe routes to schools is necessary, a necessary part of everything that we're doing, with Martin Luther King School, with Indian Prairie School, and Kalamazoo Central High School, all being in the township. So it's good to be good neighbors, and I think it's great that, that we're working together for the greater good of all of Westwood. So I appreciate your efforts so much, Jay, and look forward to this plan being implemented in, in Westwood and being a part of making Westwood better.
And I'll emphasize one last point, because of all the discussion around supporting businesses we heard earlier tonight. When we kicked off in 2021 with my predecessor, Dan, in the role, four main things came up: safety, community building, connectivity. And so, we had four goals emerge, looking at public realm and non-motorized connectivity, of course, you know, community events, and then promoting safety, working with public safety on that, on those initiatives. A fifth goal emerged from responses from National Night Out, and then taking great care with interacting with the businesses on that commercial corridor, connecting with over 25 businesses in person, face to face, understanding what are their needs in that area, what would they like to see, how do they envision this corridor over the next five to 10 years. They were integral to this plan, and so that fifth goal, foster a sustainable and resilient neighborhood. You may think that that is only environmental, but it actually has strategy related to environmental and sustainable resilient economy, because we thought that was an important opportunity for us to leverage within this plan, recognizing that we have a key commercial corridor in Westwood that supports the greater Kalamazoo community.
Thank you, Jay. Any other questions? Appreciate it. Appreciate your efforts very much. Since there's no more questions, now is the opportunity for anybody who is here in the chambers to comment on this specific item. If you, if you'd like to comment on item H1, please come forward. You'll have three minutes. State your name and whether you live in the city. Seeing none. The recommended action, Commissioners, is a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Pradel.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wilson. Any more discussion, Commissioners?
I just, Mayor, I would like to say to Jay, your, your energy is infectious. You get the crowd jumping. So thank you for doing what you do and how you do it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. So just a comment from me, who's been with my partner over here around the commission here for a while. I think for many, many election cycles, people running for office were always asked, well, how are you going to promote cooperation with neighboring jurisdictions? That seemed like that question would come up over and over again. And those of us running would give very positive answers about what we were going to try to do, and I will not say that we failed at it, but I would say that often, there wasn't a great deal that came out of all that. And in some, in recent years, we were actually forced to do that by a lawsuit, which resulted in a construct we have now related to our water system. And that created something called the Utility Policy Committee, which is a group of people. I happened to sit on it, as do representatives of the township. And even though there was a boatload of acrimony in this town for decades and decades about the townships and the water system and all that, that kind of business, and we, we lived that deep, deep-felt antagonism oftentimes, I can say that the resolution of that lawsuit, which has just literally forced us to be in the room and talk to each other as human beings and meet on a regular basis, guess what? It works. And this now is an example of the power that people have. This wasn't something instituted by some grand series of meetings between, you know, leadership at the township and leadership at the city. This was people in neighborhoods that live adjacent to each other that recognize that in this state, that we've got cut up into so many different jurisdictions, one side of the street to another side of the street, does not really change your experience of how you live together in a neighborhood. And so, this is a people-power move, in my estimation, and I guess maybe it seems like it could be a little thing, but it's not a little thing. This is the first time I've really experienced this kind of undertaking, and I think if these, you keep the same attitude, that we're going to roll forward and we're going to begin, begin to feel more and more as a broader community and not an isolated political, political jurisdiction. So thank you for your efforts. I hope you keep working on that. Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
I will abstain, because I live in Westwood.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next on the agenda is item H2, City Manager Rizma.
Authorization for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to accept a State of Michigan Eagle Brownfield Redevelopment Grant in the amount of $1 million in support of the Brewster's Redevelopment Project.
Looks to me like there may be a staff report or just ready for questions.
We have our Sustainable Development Coordinator, Coordinator Jamie McCarthy here to ask any, answer any questions.
Okay. So this is something we have discussed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've had a...
Had a presentation on this.
Presentation, yeah.
At a committee of the whole meeting, as a matter of fact, so it was rather extensive. Don't miss those if you want to get deep dive into details. So that did happen. Are there questions for Jamie McCarthy at this time on this item? All right. Looks like no questions. Thank you for being prepared for that. Seeing no questions, now is the opportunity for anybody here in the chambers to comment on this item. Once again, you'll have three minutes. Please state your name and whether you live in the city. Seeing no comments. Commissioners, the suggested action is a motion to approve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Pradel. Supported by Commissioner Decker. Discussion. Commissioner Pradel.
I shared this at the committee of the whole meeting, but I quote this again. I'm, I'm really excited about this project, because I, this, this corridor particularly needs an anchor. And I really think this provides an opportunity for an anchor to come into place, and the ripple effect that will happen in that corridor, I think, will be pretty quickly felt. I also know that's a corridor where there are a lot of small businesses, a lot of people who work for those small businesses, and I can see where, when you have a hotel property where you have that many units, you're going to have a constant flow right off the highway. There are people supporting everything from our brewery to, again, some of the small restaurant operations and everything that are there. So I enthusiastically support this. I'm also excited that it provides an opportunity, potentially, for other affordable housing because of this development happening as well. So I will be voting yes on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I, I do also like this development that's going to happen. And I think about as we spoke, or as we had our presentation today regarding the economic development strategy for the city, and I talked about the brownfields, I just want to reiterate that Jamie and her team are doing a great job, and this is a great way to bring brownfield dollars into the state, or into our city, so we are able to remediate the land and the parcels that we have, so developments like this can take place. It's a good job.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Other discussion? All right, I, I, just a couple of things about that is that I, I do want to remind people that there was a rather extensive presentation on this, so this is not a decision taken lightly by this commission. There was a lot of information provided to us relative to the details of this project. Couple other interesting things, just recognize the challenges people are having in Kalamazoo. This has been adjacent to an intersection that has been a horrible traffic jam for how many years now? Have they been redoing the connection there? And it's been, that's now finished, and we are now beginning to see some private economic investment adjacent to it. Any economic activity and development in particular is a high-risk undertaking. And I am also happy that we have local developers that are involved in this, that are committed to the Kalamazoo area, that are wanting to do a quality project, and are, once again, using a piece of property that could be avoided, because it's contaminated. And that's why brownfield funds are being allocated to this. So thank you for your work. Thank you for your efforts. Thank you for sticking with us and finding a way to make it happen. I think it's going to be a, a great, great thing in general for that portion of the city as it relates to encouraging other economic development. Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next on the agenda is item H3, City Manager Rizma.
Acceptance of a USDA Inflation Reduction Act Urban and Community Forestry Grant in the amount of $1 million.
Thank you, Manager Rizma. Is there a staff report on this?
There's no staff report, but our Director of Public Services, James Baker, is available for any questions.
Thank you, Manager Rizma. Questions for Director Baker on this particular grant opportunity? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this item, this item H3? If so, please come to the podium, state your name, you'll have three minutes. Seeing no one, Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to accept the grant and authorize the City Manager to sign all related documents. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Cooney. Supported by Commissioner Decker. All right, thank you so much. Any other discussion, Commissioners? Yeah, Commissioner Pradel.
This is, in my view, a very exciting thing we're voting on here. This is 900 trees over four years. We've already been investing a tremendous amount of work in this, but in 2001, 2021, when we did the tree inventory, there were 12,000 trees just in the right of way alone, where there were spaces where, where you could place trees and needed to go. And, you know, we've seen in some recent storms, oftentimes the people who are most adversely impacted when storm damage happens are in low income, income areas. Some of these major old growth trees cost $2, $3,000 to be removed if they fall in the rut. This grant is going to provide money to remove, I think it was like 50 trees that are in rough shape, but also plant 900 new trees, especially in our core neighborhoods especially. So I think that's a big win for the city, and I'm enthusiastically supporting this.
Well said, Commissioner Pradel. Anything else? Clerk Boiling, please call.
Oh, well, I was just going to say.
Yes, Vice Mayor Hess.
I was just going to say, that seeing our representative from Environmental Concerns Committee that goes to the Tree Committee, being, reporting out for several years on the tree canopy in Kalamazoo, and that the ability to have this, this money come our way to actually improve the tree, the, the tree canopy, especially in marginalized neighborhoods, the SBK neighborhoods, is just wonderful. Of course, I support it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. City Manager Rizma.
Item H4, Approval of a Supplemental and Change Order for the GPI Affluent Sewer Realignment Project for Groundwater Dewatering and Treatment in the amount of $1,615.
Thank you, Manager Rizma. Good job on saying affluent sewer realignment.
Yeah, I had to practice that.
Is there a staff report on this item?
No, but Director Baker's here, if there are any questions.
I see there, Director Baker, I appreciate it. Are there questions for Director Baker from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Pradel.
I would just appreciate the chance to hear. I know, like, when you see supplemental, it means that it's more than we anticipated. And, you know, a million dollars is, is a lot of change. So I just think it'd be worth maybe just for the community to better understand why this is being requested and how it will impact the project.
Welcome, Director Baker.
I've got just some supplemental information to help me answer that question, so stand by, we're going to get it pulled up. So thank you, thank you very much, Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, City Commission. Commissioner Pradel, it's certainly a, a great question. It's not one that's easily answered. So I, I do have just a brief presentation to kind of help us formulate a response to the answer. You know, so, so broadly speaking, this project is part of that project that was awarded by the City Commission back in April. This is a odor control project. This is in addition to over $15 million of, of work that we've been embarked upon at the treatment plant. We know that our, our efforts are working. We have reduced hydrogen sulfide emissions by over 89% since 2019. And this is, you know, one additional project that's in, you know, a, a wide array of many, many projects. This pipeline replaces an interceptor-class pipeline that was first built in 1964. So that was originally a three-and-a-half-mile pipeline that had many, many industrial customers on it. By 2010, that pipeline was experiencing reduced flows from customers. All the customers were rerouted from that pipeline back in 2012, and we've been working through a design for a number of years to reroute that, that last customer. So this work, really kind of that blue line that you see, I don't know how zoomed in these are, maybe a little far away, I apologize for that. But this work that was approved back in April really focuses on a whole new pipeline. It's in a new location. It operates completely different from the other pipeline. It's got a tremendous amount of hydraulic design features that were specifically identified and called out in a report issued by Jones and Henry back in July of 2020. It also removes the industrial chamber that was on GPI property, that, that was a point of contention amongst the community for possible source of odors. So this project has gone through quite, quite a lot of versions and iterations and changes. This was something that was first put together by the city, bid out and awarded. We received no bids, and we were really looking for a way to deliver this in an alternate project manner. So we created a construction management contract with GPI. So GPI actually bid and awarded that work, and then we created a contract with GPI. And so, that's kind of all the history of the project itself. So it's a project, it's an odor control project, it's an interceptor-class pipeline owned by the city of Kalamazoo to serve our customer that was on that pipeline. There were many customers on that pipeline originally, now just the one. These customers were unique in that they were located... just the one. These customers were unique in that they were located along the river, not along the street. So, you know, we worked to serve our customers. Most customers, like residential customers, have a street. There's a big sewer line in the street, you hook to that. This is the same concept, except for this customer doesn't have facilities along the street, they have them along the river. And so that was, you know, something that's unique about this pipeline. Starting back in May, so in April, the City Commission approved the contract. We started contract administration work on it. We started doing a groundwater investigation. This pipeline and the trench to dig the pipeline is going to occur below the water table. And to work below the water table, you've got to do what's called dewatering. So that's where big pumps are brought in, and they point, they put out a bunch of points along the ground, and then they'll pump usually for a few weeks before excavation starts. That way they can dig a hole that's deeper than groundwater, and that hole is going to be dry, it's going to be safe for the workers, and it's going to be safe to place the pipe. We studied that groundwater to make sure if we're pumping that groundwater out, discharging it to the wastewater treatment plant, that we can meet our local limits that are established by ordinance, which are required by Eagle, to meet Eagle rules and regulations under Public Act 451. I apologize for that. And then also EPA, the Clean Water Act under EPA. So there's certain things that whether or not the treatment plant can treat for it, we've got to make sure it's out before it comes into the treatment plant. So we found mercury and PFOS that were above the levels at which the treatment plant can treat. And so that means if we went forward with that work and discharged that material to the treatment plant, it would end up discharging to the river at levels that are higher than what is allowed. So we went back to the contractor and developed a plan and program, looking at several alternatives that would meet that treatment. And what we came up with was a rental of actual carbon scrubber units, or like carbon filtration units that would be onsite. So it's a rental. And so that's the rental of the carbon scrubber units onsite, and then the treatment through those carbon scrubber units. So this is a breakdown of cost. This was all-in, about a $2.9 million project. Now we're adding a million dollars to it, and it's now an all-in about $3.9 million project. In terms of timeline, we go all the way back to 2022, actually. Before that, we go all the way back to 2020 in terms of where we've been, moving this project slowly along. We're somewhat pushed back by this groundwater discovery, but overall, we're still meeting our goals. Overall, we plan to, you know, really accomplish a lot of work in the tie-in in September. There is some work happening right now under this contract, so there is site clearing, clearing and degrubbing, that sort of thing is going on at the site right now. And then this project is scheduled for final completion, restoration by July of 2025. Again, things we've already done, we've got approval of the construction agreement, which includes approval of construction engineering with Jones and Henry, and approval of that construction with GPI and Fulton Excavating. We've got an easement in place that was approved, and that takes us back to April. So, you know, with that, this is a big cost that we didn't anticipate. What we didn't anticipate was that we were going to run into PFOS in the groundwater that was higher than what our treatment abilities were at the treatment plant. And we were quite shocked by that price. That was, there was at least three different firms that bid on this stuff. So it's not like, that price appears to be the market price for this stuff. Again, and it's expensive to bring that equipment in, to provide that level of treatment, and to do so from a mobile perspective out on the job site and in the field. So hopefully I've answered your question, Commissioner Pradel, and, you know, certainly thank you very much for that question. And I think that's something that community members probably have a question about.
Other questions, Commissioner Pradel? No, thank you, Director Baker. Other questions for Director Baker? Yeah, Commissioner Wilson?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Director Baker, for breaking this down. I noticed that we have $500,000 dedicated for contingency. And I was just wondering if you could tell us if those are reserved for specific contingencies, or, you know, just getting at why we can't touch that supplement, some of the supplemental.
Yeah, certainly. You know, that's a great question. I think as we looked at this, this change came in so early in the contract, it was our intent to preserve that original contingency, and it's our intent to preserve the autonomy of that contingency. If you recall back to the April approval process, that $500,000 was structured in the agreement so that the city manager could give approval of those dollars. And we anticipated that's your typical construction contingencies. We find things underground, perhaps the length isn't quite right, we have to, you know, add another, you know, 20 feet or so of the pipeline, or, you know, we've got to add more concrete or something like that. Your typical pay item type contingency items. This contingency item came in so much higher, and, you know, really was something that we wanted to bring forward to the City Commission, kind of alone and by itself, so that we could deal with this and then continue to go back under the contract with the intended autonomy of the contract. Thank you.
Thanks, that makes sense.
Appreciate it. Any other questions for Director Baker? Thank you so much. We prepared to answer that in a detailed fashion. No other questions? Now is it time for anyone who's here in the chambers to comment on this item, this item H4? If you would like to comment, please come forward, state your name and where you live in the city. Seen no one. Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to approve and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson, supported by Commissioner Cooney. Any further discussion, Commissioners? Commissioner Pradel?
Just want to thank Director Baker for being so prepared to present that tonight, but I just wanted to just, you know, share kind of a historical perspective here, too. This is an example of we're doing whatever it takes to keep our word to, especially the north and the east side, about trying to do our best to eliminate or reduce the odor that's existed and, I guess, you know, been a major issue for the community for decades. And, you know, I think this speaks, we could very well just say, oh, gosh, you know, there was unforeseen million-dollar expense. And so, you know, we've invested, you know, all these millions of dollars, let's just stop there. But you guys continue to find strategies and to keep innovating and finding ways to keep this moving forward. So thank you to you and your team for remaining committed to this issue and seeing it through.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Any other discussion comments on this one? I would just like to reinforce what Commissioner Pradel said. Just a reminder, you mentioned again, Director Baker, this is part of our overall strategy related to odor control, fancy term affluent. And, you know, this is, I think, something that was identified as a specific problem area that was contributing to the issue. So hopefully, it's well-designed, and there's going to be a big, big reduction, again, related to this work. So I appreciate that. Clerk Burling, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next on the agenda is Item H5, City Manager Ritzma.
Adoption of an Ordinance to amend the Kalamazoo City Code, Chapter 29-5, Flood Plane Management.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Are you, do you have a...
Director Baker is here again to answer any questions. Do you have any sort of presentation or anything? Okay. Yeah, this was already presented at the last committee of the whole prior meetings.
Yes. I thought it was a detailed and important presentation related to all things flood plane related to the city of Kalamazoo, not just one part of the city of Kalamazoo. It was very helpful. Seen no questions for staff, right? Is there a question? Okay, Vice Mayor Hess?
Sure, just a brief question. In the packet, Director Baker, maybe you can speak to this, but the, you know, in your presentation, you spoke about the link to the GIS map, and the link is in our packet, but it's not accessible. It said page not found. So I wonder if we can fix that.
Yes, thank you for the great question. I don't know exactly what's wrong with the link. It could be just the way I pasted it. I can share, if you go, just Google, you know, city Kalamazoo, GIS, all caps, that should take you to the city's website with GIS. And it looks like you've got your computer there, so we'll see if that works.
Geez, there's all kinds of GIS maps. Line mapping.
I've got my computer, so stand by.
Making progress there, Vice Mayor?
No, I'm not.
No, okay.
It's this one right here, GIS web map. Okay. Oh. I'm zooming, so, okay. Okay, yeah, I can get to it there, but the link is not, is just, the link wasn't working.
Scott, could you switch me so I'm an input? So I just Googled city Kalamazoo GIS, and the very first Google search item is View GIS Maps. I'm going to click on that. And then it says, it's the city website, says View GIS Maps. There's a tab that says View GIS Web Map. I'm going to click on that. And then it brings up kind of a map of the city.
Yeah. Yeah, I have that here now.
The streets are all like red lines.
Yeah.
And then I'm going to click Layers. The Layers is, if you look across the top, blue ribbon, there's a bunch of stuff on the upper right-hand corner.
Layer, okay.
And you've got like a paint palette, a ruler, printer, four squares, and then there's layers of, you just like squares. So I'm going to click on that layer, those layers, and it gives me a bunch of different choices. I'm going to scroll down here and click on Flood Plane. And it turns on Flood Plane. Now I can expand that arrow, and I can see to choose either Legacy Flood Plane, so that's kind of the flood plane before the ordinance updates, or I can pick the 2024 FEMA-approved flood plane. So I've got them both turned on right now, and I'm going to zoom in a little too much, and then zoom out a little bit. And I can kind of see, I'm actually zooming in on that Portage Creek Flood Plane that we've been talking about a lot lately.
Yeah.
And you just see kind of where these flood planes are. So the Zone X, which is the really dark blue, that is the, oh, excuse me, the dark blue is the Zone AE, that's the 100-year flood plane. And then the light blue is the 500 years. So, again, with flood planes, that's kind of where the risk can happen. You know, we've talked a lot about the flood projects and how to mitigate risk and different strategies and methods that we have, different plans that we have within our hazard mitigation plan and move forward and seek funding for some of those. So those are, you know, how we solve it. The ordinance recommendations are really independent of that, and just looking at just the risk and where the risk is at.
Okay, all right. Yes, thank you very much. That makes a lot of sense. It just wasn't working at that point. So now it's working, and I know where my flood planes are.
Another great opportunity for folks, too, is click on Flood Imagery. That's the little click choice just below Flood Plane. And if you expand that, you can look at 2008 or 2018, you can take your pick from flood events. The 2008 flood event occurred in September, and that was a hurricane-induced flood event. The 2018 flood event was a runoff event where we had rain on top of frozen ground and melting snow. So I'm going to look at the 2018 flood event, and you can just kind of go in, and you can find the area, you can find, you know, this is, GIS is bipartial mapping. So you can just kind of look at flood imagery, and you can turn on and off Flood Plane and get a general understanding for, you know, that 2018 flood, which was a classic textbook 100-year flood. Where does it come in, in terms of Flood Plane? And it's pretty close. It's right there in terms of, you know, looking at the screen and seeing where those results are. The screen is a little delayed from what I've got on my computer here, but you can see that it's a great resource for folks. So I'll pause there and see if there's any other questions on the recommended changes in ordinance.
I don't see any other questions. Beautiful tutorial on how to use our GIS map. Thank you very much.
We could pull a clip of this out and push it up on our website. Certainly.
By someone who's very excited about GIS maps, I can tell.
Yeah.
Since there are no more questions, is there anyone here in the chambers who'd like to comment on this item? That's Item H5. Seen none. The motion is to adopt the ordinance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Decker. Further discussion? Thank you very much. Clerk Burling, please call the roll.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next is Item H6. Manager Ritzma.
Adoption of ordinances to amend the sections within the Kalamazoo City Code, Chapter 36, the Traffic Code, related to overnight parking, meter rates, and operational hours of meters, and adoption of a resolution adopting a parking fee schedule for the city of Kalamazoo.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Is there a staff report on this item?
Yes. Our deputy economic, or CEP head director, Christina Anderson, is coming forward. She's got a brief presentation and can answer any questions.
We also had a prior presentation on this item as well, correct?
You're correct, yeah.
Welcome, Christina Anderson.
Thank you. Yes, this is something that we discussed at our last meeting. That was the first reading for this item. I am going to go over this presentation again. I will go over it quickly, and we can get into discussion items. So quickly, we're going to talk about the why, including the why now for this action. We're going to talk about what is actually in the ordinance and in the resolution. We're going to talk about projects that are spurred from this work, these ordinance changes, and briefly talk on some of the impacts of this work. As we discussed before, this is not new work. We have been working with our downtown businesses and our community since we approved the 2025 master plan, and then... And then after that, when the strategic blueprint for downtown parking, which was the parking plan that was specifically called out in the master plan, was created by the partnership. And all of this work is stemming from recommendations made by a retail market study that we had commissioned for the downtown as part of the master plan, which said, one of the major, the top issue, or the two top issues that are holding back your downtown from reaching its full economic potential are the street system and the parking system. So being able to navigate, and being able to navigate, and parking, and how parking is managed, are the two top items holding the downtown back from reaching its full economic potential. Here are some recommendations. Those recommendations were in the master plan, and those are what went into the strategic blueprint for downtown parking. The goal of the changes brought before you tonight, the work that's being done to the parking system over the last couple of years, the work that is projected to occur over the next few years as we transform the parking system, all have the goals to support livability and economic development in downtown. And I know that may seem a little contrary, especially with some of the comment that we heard earlier today. However, there is science behind good management of your parking system. And there are impacts to the health of downtown businesses, the opportunity for future development, if it is not managed well, in addition to also the fact that our downtown parking system is an asset. There are physical structures and enforcement and other management needs that must occur, and at some point must figure out how they are paid for by the system. So just real quick, the one major difference between your packet on this item from the last meeting to this meeting was a one-pager that I put in here about some parking management principles. This was something that Commissioner Pradel had asked me about at the last meeting, and so we included some of these things in your packet today on why parking matters. Parking is clearly not always a super exciting topic. And therefore, its importance often is pushed to the side. The reality of the situation is, is that there are studies, both here and across the country, size cities the same size as us, bigger, smaller, that show that managing the system and managing it well will, one, help improve customers getting to businesses. So if you do not manage on-street parking spaces, they can get misused. They can be used all day by contractors, employees, residents. And then those spaces are not available for downtown businesses. And one of the key principles is you need turnover of those spaces to support economic health of a commercial area. When folks come to a commercial area and are looking for parking, there's a sweet spot for how much parking should be available for someone's perception to say, there's parking avail, you know, there's no parking here, or there's parking available for me. And that's somewhere between an occupancy rate of 85% to 90% of the block. The way to achieve that is to manage both the hours that park, you know, how long you can park in one spot, as well as the pricing for that spot. The third thing that we wanted to talk about, the changes that we are talking about tonight, and some of the projects that we are looking forward to, are tied to an action we took last fall, which is making the first 90 minutes of the ramps free for customers. And so at the time, we did that a little ahead of schedule because it was taking us a little longer to get organized, to purchase the parking meters, and to get this work organized. And so we saw a need and put that out there and changed ramps, parking rates, so the first 90 minutes are free. These changes that are before you tonight help balance that system, fiscally balance out that 90-minute free in the ramp. Finally, we talk about market-based pricing. So to effectively manage the parking in the area, you set rates based on the demand for the area. It's not a, you know, ticker that changes based on if it's rush hour or not rush hour, but it's thinking about the system as a whole. And the strategic blueprint lays out areas, lays out three-tiered, highest price to lowest price. And it also talks about the amount of time that you can park in those, in each of those areas, based on how close you are to a location. And by managing all these things, and by offering parking that's discounted in the ramp, having surface lots as well as on-street parking provides choice. One can choose to pay a higher rate and be closer to the business that they are going to. One can choose to pay a lower rate and park a little bit further away, and that's how you optimize the system of the area. So when we talk about why these changes now, there are a number of reasons. First, I mentioned that this work has been underway for quite some time. Repeatedly, over the last few years, the constant refrain from the downtown businesses that we have been working with is, when are the meters going in? We've been talking about this. We understand the benefit of managing our parking system in this way. You know, when are we gonna get going? Not to single out my friends here in the front row, but I, at every meeting, got the same question about the overnight parking. When are we doing the overnight parking system? We know residents want it. We know this will be a benefit to developers. When are we going to think about a guest parking system? When is it coming? And again, we just have moved a little slower than we anticipated in getting all of these changes before you. The existing ordinance is out of date. It talks about cranking meters and dropping in coins. There's some housekeeping changes that we must make to the ordinance to bring it into, up to today. Thinking about our mobile pay systems, you know, potentially kiosk parking meters in the future. It is out of date and needs to be changed, and that's part of the work before you tonight. Providing overnight parking through the permit system in downtown is something that has a demonstrated need behind it. We have, developers have a challenge when they are thinking about bringing new residential into the downtown and how they use the limited space on those properties to both provide a number of units as well as parking for those units that is currently demanded. Setting up on-street parking allows for some benefit there. We know that residents often will have one parking space. There might be two residents in a building. Maybe they have guests that come overnight. The overnight parking permit system provides for that. I've already mentioned the fiscal health of the parking system. We made a change to the parking system last fall that's had an impact on its fiscal health. It's had a positive impact in providing choice for patrons, but it does, has had an impact to the parking system. And these are the other half of the changes that are ready to be put into, into effect to balance that. At our downtown, at the Southwest Michigan First Downtown Chamber meeting on Tuesday of last week, we again presented these changes to a packed room of downtown businesses and fielded questions. We did not, in that meeting, receive any specific pushback on these changes or on the advent of the meters. It was more of, we know that this has been a long time coming, and we see the benefits. Hopefully, everyone on the dais was able to review Clarence Lloyd, who's the vice president and the chamber director's letter that came in today on these changes. And when we think about the why now, I just want to read a small quote. "The vast majority of businesses in downtown recognize the challenges of free premium spaces and are ready for us to act to address it once and for all. 90 minutes free in the ramp was step one in preparation for this next step, an equally critical step. Help us move towards best practice as a community and finally get unstuck from the history of how things have always been. The pandemic stopped this progress a few years ago. We are excited that the time is once again now. Let's not miss it. It's time for us to support our business community with policy and infrastructure improvements." What is in the ordinance before you tonight? The addition of overnight parking being allowed through a permit system is in the ordinance tonight. Extending the time that meters can operate is included in the ordinance tonight. Going from the possibility of 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And then the housekeeping updates that I referenced. The meters on the mall, which have been a project that we have talked about, are not in the ordinance. We purchased the meters. City Commission approved the purchase of the meters earlier this year, and they are ready to go in. They can go in under the current rate structure and timing. The changes in the ordinance impact the timing and the rate structure because it's the timing and rate structure that makes sense for the highest demand area in our downtown, the Kalamazoo Mall. And so that's how those two projects are tied together. And then finally, before you, you have a resolution that adjusts pricing throughout the whole system. So when you look at that, you'll see some changes to some of the garage rates, some of the monthly rates for monthly renters, and the addition of the overnight parking permit, as well as the overnight guest permits. The meters on the mall, with new technology, can take advantage of the increase from $1.75 to $2.00 an hour. The rest of the meters that exist in downtown Kalamazoo cannot. So any changes to any other area following the strategic blueprint will have to wait until we update that meter technology, which is something we hope to do over the next few years. And I think I've covered these items, so I will stop there and see if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Questions? Commissioner Pradel.
Thank you so much for presenting again. I know this is something I asked you privately at the end of the planning commission meeting, but one thing that's a concern of mine is that a lot of our public meetings, I mean, there are public meetings throughout the day as well, sometimes at City Hall in downtown. But, you know, planning commission, committee, the whole, for city commission, this business meeting, they happen after 5:00. And if the time is extended to 8:00 PM, one of my concerns is that it will create a barrier for people who may want to come and make a comment or participate in this process. I just wanted to get your thoughts about that, just, you know, how we can maybe mitigate that and make sure that we can not create an added barrier for people to access their government.
Certainly, and this has come up, a couple folks have asked this question. So we can handle this in multiple ways. We can not change the meter timing around City Hall. We can change the meter timing around City Hall for whenever there is not a meeting in this building and use signage or other enforcement techniques to handle that situation. I think what we need to think about, rather than me saying we should do one or the other, I think we can find the right way to manage it, but I want to make sure that we're not accidentally causing ourselves more problems. So say we keep the meters around downtown and don't, you know, when, when we sell new meters, we don't change the rates and we don't change the timing. Will those then get used by folks who aren't coming to a City Hall meeting because they're, you know, cheaper and have a different time period? And then have we not achieved what we wanted to achieve? So I understand that concern, and I think that we can work with Park Kalamazoo to come up with the right solution to make sure that we're handling that concern.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Anderson, for that presentation. So I had a couple quick questions. First, you know, I've been to other cities, and, you know, me and the city manager, we'd had a conversation about, you know, what our parking meters and things like that could look like. Because what I found in other cities, and then when I came here, is that so many of them were able to take credit cards or debit card or something like that, and not having to carry around so much change. And I do believe that having an updated parking meter system that is able to do that, I think, is great. So I do have a few questions, you know, because I thought I had my mind made up as I was reading stuff, but, you know, some things have changed. So when we talk about the 90-minute free parking, and you says that we are losing $20,000 a month on the 90-minute free parking, and this is just over a five-month period. So can you give us an estimate of how many individuals or how many cars were using it before we gave the 90 minutes, and how many have been using it after?
Sure, I don't have those numbers. We do have Park Kalamazoo here. I don't know if they have those numbers present with them. What we do know is that folks coming to downtown are taking advantage of the 90 minutes free. So I know that, but I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have an exact number of before we instituted it and after. It would also fluctuate, too, based on, you know, the holiday time versus now, but...
Okay, thank you. And I was kind of on the spot. I was like, oh, I wonder how many? So I'm kind of looking at, I don't know if you have this in your presentation there. I was looking at the maps that we have, and is that the one?
For the downtown, for the overnight parking or for...
Yeah, so talk to me a little bit more about what those stars are. That is where the meters will be, or go back, yeah. That is where the meters will be put at, right? And that is specifically for the Kalamazoo Mall, is that correct?
Correct. So the meters that are being proposed on the Kalamazoo Mall are kiosks. So it's one structure. And the reason for that is that the mall has a lot of things. There's landscaping and trees and sidewalk cafes and already existing signage, and we're doing something in addition to that. So we have purchased four kiosks, one for each block face on the Kalamazoo Mall. We worked with a small group of downtown business owners to help place them and talk through where the best locations would be. Those kiosks, to your earlier point, can be paid with, with card or cash, as well as virtual systems, is how they're set up. So again, multiple choices in how you can pay. They are license plate-based, which means you enter in your license plate when you pay in the kiosk. And that's how they use their enforcement system. Very similar to how, well, it is, how Park Mobile operates right now. You have your, your, your license plate number that you enter in when you pay for that time.
Okay. And in Park Mobile, that was the, the new parking company that we just went into contract with.
No, Park Mobile is the parking app that the city uses that has, they've used it for years. It's what you see on the parking meter. It has a, it has, it's green with a P that almost looks like an at symbol. That is Park Mobile. That is our app that we use to pay for parking. I believe what you're referring to, Commissioner, is the company that operationally manages the parking system, which is, it's Park Kalamazoo. The name of the company is PCI. In the past, we were known as Central City, and it was ABM was the manager. That changed over this, earlier this year. So we have a new operational manager of the parking system.
Okay, and so, you know, we've had a lot of conversation here today, especially some, some of our residents and our business owner expressing the frustration and the concern with the lack of business and the lack of being able to maneuver all around the downtown and west edge, and just areas that we have all of this construction that is going on right now. I'm feeling that, you know, doing something right now at this time might deter more individuals from coming to the downtown area. I, I think eventually, you know, it could be definitely a good idea to be able to get more revenue for the parking system this way and to be able to give more residents down there extra parking. But talk to me about the residents that say that live down there now, where do they park?
Sure, so actually, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to address the first part of your statement, which was, you said that this could be a good idea in the future to fiscally support the parking system. The, one of the reasons for doing this work now is that not only does it have that benefit to support the parking system fiscally, which needs support, but these changes also have a positive impact... a positive impact on businesses. Turnover is critical to businesses that rely on street parking. We cannot regulate turnover without these rules. The perception that there is no parking is a problem. Seeing available spaces when you drive down a street, because we've managed the parking rates and the timing appropriately, helps negate that. There are, you know, specific numbers of turnover spaces that are, or turnover, potential turnovers that are generated by residents, by restaurants and retail businesses. The way to achieve that and support that turnover is with parking regulations. The meters for the mall, which is what we're, I think what a lot of people are talking about, are not tied to this ordinance, right? We already have those and can install those at the current rate, which is $1.75 an hour, and run them until 5:00. That is not as efficient or effective as doing it based on the area and the demand for that area, which is a slightly higher rate, $2, and going a little bit later because that's where the nightlife is. And so you think about that when you do it. That's the, that's the first part of what you asked. Right now, we have quite a push-pull with new developments that come in downtown. You know, we want to have more housing in our downtown, for sure. And that's the push-pull between how many units are you be able, are you able to provide versus providing parking spaces, right? And how that impacts your pro forma and your ability to provide affordable housing. Providing other space, on-street space, that is available for residents, impacts that. That allows a developer to make choices for providing more units onsite because they can be handled, the parking demand for those can be handled both onsite and offsite. And so requesting the allowance for overnight parking through a permit system has been something that has been discussed, again, requested by multiple, both projects as well as residents that live in and around downtown. We know that an overnight permit system is something that is also of interest of some neighborhoods. It's in a couple of neighborhood plans. And so this is the opportunity to test that and work it out in the downtown where there's a higher demand, and then we can work with neighborhoods that are interested in applying the system.
So, you know, I definitely understand. All developments want to make sure that they have enough parking, especially for housing, for their residents, and for the guests that can come. I would also say that that's also them incorporating a parking structure within their buildings and whatever they're going to be building. I just, right now, with, for me, and again, like I said, I was conflicted at first. I thought I had my mind up, but then after hearing some of the things that are going through, reading some more of the emails, that some of the residents and some of the businesses have said some want it, some do not. But I think that for me, definitely within the Kalamazoo Mall, that would be a yes, because we talk about some of the Kalamazoo Mall businesses that are needing some more support from us. Being able, as you said, with the overflow, I think it said, what was it, 30? For every store that's down there, there's a turnover of 38 per 1,000 cars, and for every restaurant, it's a turnover of 48 for 1,000 cars. And I believe that, that's going to get more...
Yeah, pretty close, yeah.
That's going to get, you know, more individuals and patrons into some of these businesses. I think that right now, trying to put in some parking rates and permitted parking when there's so much construction going on downtown right now, I just can't, I can't really see that right now, you know? People are already struggling right now to navigate downtown, and now we're going to tell them, now you're going to have to park farther out, and if you want to park down here, you're going to pay a monthly fee, when there's going to be up to possibly another 10 years of construction going on. I don't see how, you know, I don't see how that's right.
Sure. I understand. It's, as I started at the beginning of my presentation, I think it can feel a little contrary, or a little contradictory. What we know about parking and best practices is that by regulating parking, we are supporting economic health of an area. Right now, downtown parking, and I think Clarence notes it in his letter, is misused. There are spaces that they are not turning over. People are parking there for long periods of time, even with our enforcement. I know that someone earlier today suggested we do more enforcement. There is enforcement, but that alone isn't how you fully manage a system.
I do, I do look at some of the rates and what we charge, you know, especially if you get a ticket for some things like that. Maybe we need some more enforcement. Maybe we need some higher rates for people that park there longer than they should be at the moment. But I'm just saying that as of right now, you know, when I hear the individuals and the residents and the businesses come up and talk, especially again, in the Kalamazoo Mall, I can see how what we have purchased could definitely benefit those businesses down there, but I don't see right now how it's going to benefit the community when they're already struggling how it is, especially with all of the construction that's going on, all the construction that's going to be going on, especially when you talk about the event center and what's going to be stopping there and also converting that into a two-way. I don't think this is just the right time to make, I don't think this is the right time to start to charge our residents monthly permit parking fees. And I guess, you know, I think about, I was kind of looking at some of these rates, about between the Radisson, Radisson ramp, the Epic malls, and the Catalyst ramp, and the Arcadia ramps, and I do see, yes, they do go down a little bit, but I just think, you know, people are already struggling as it is. I mean, we heard the guy from the First United Methodist, I believe, saying how many people come to him, and we all know this, with water, electricity, I mean, everything that's going on right now. I just, right now, I do not think that I can support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Other questions? Commissioner Wilson?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Christina.
You're welcome.
So I know when this, when the studies first started, we didn't anticipate there being so much construction disruption, I like to call it. Also, we couldn't anticipate COVID happening. I, you know, I share similar sentiments to Commissioner Decker. I'm a little hesitant to implement such changes, you know, and when businesses and the community is already struggling with the construction disruption. So I was just wondering, I know that you mentioned some of the research and the science shows that implementing these systems can increase economic vitality and have a great fiscal impact, but I was wondering if any of that research or science spoke to implementing such a change during a time of great construction disruption?
Sure. I understand. We are in the process of transforming our downtown. The streets that I'm referring to haven't really even started, right, construction yet. So most of downtown, the streets that are going to be transforming, you know, aren't going to be starting until 2026. There's always change, and especially when you don't make a lot of movement of change for a long time. So there becomes a question of when is it the right, when is it the right time to implement the change and what does it mean? When thinking about changes, you know, an increase of a quarter an hour for your meter rates, or adding an overnight parking permit system where there's need for one, it's new. But the benefits that have been shown in other communities, and I think our community is, while we find it to be very unique and special, has a lot of qualities that other downtowns have, have been shown to be beneficial. So the rates that you have, that I have up in front of you, you know, these are maximum rates. It does not necessarily mean that all of them are changing or are changing now. The overnight parking rates don't exist. We're creating a permit system, so we're adding capacity, and that's what those, what those two are. That overnight street rate is very similar, I think I talked about this at the last meeting, to what you can do in the ramp overnight, right? So we're just adding, again, more choice into the mix. Again, regulating parking, not always a very exciting sounding activity, but if we don't regulate it, it does have impacts, often negative impacts, on those adjacent businesses that rely on it. I'm not trying to be insensitive to the construction disruption. I'm trying to look at the long-term health of downtown holistically. When we had the market study done, the two things that were the top two things holding the downtown back from its full economic potential were better management of the parking system, including the changes that we're talking about tonight, and redoing the street network. So we are working on both of those things right now and trying to do it in a way that is slow and thoughtful and methodical, right? So when we're talking about the meters, right now, all we have purchased are the meters for the mall. We know we need to purchase, which is going to be an expensive proposition, new meters everywhere in downtown. Our meters, they're in bad shape, they're old technology, you know, we need to upgrade. That's going to be a multiple-year project that we're going to be working on with you as we go along and with everything else that's happening in downtown. And so we are trying to pause and do it in a way where we are making changes in the place that seem, that have the most impact. And so thinking about our highest demand area, the mall, which is currently not regulated, how do we regulate that?
Yes, Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think a lot of this really makes sense, but not now. The headline in the paper is going to be "City Raises Parking Rates." So anybody that was thinking about coming downtown is going to see that headline and say, forget it. I'm not going. I can't stand the construction. Now they're raising the parking rates. I'm not going downtown. So I think we got to pause on this. I think in the long run, this is a good way to go. But right now, I believe, this is not the time. I agree with Commissioner Decker. I agree with my colleague. I just don't think this is the right time. I'm not going to vote for this.
So we're kind of veering over into discussion right now, which is fine, but I just want to keep us focused on questions for staff at this moment. So our, just while our good planner, Anderson, is up here, are there more questions specifically for Planner Anderson at this time?
Sure.
Yes?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Okay, so around the city, there are 90-minute free parking, outside the ramps. Those are going, are those going away into metered spaces? And I know there's maps.
Sure.
Yeah.
This ordinance does not have any changes to meters outside of where meters are going or not going. All the ordinance does is add the ability to adjust the rates and adjust the timing. What I think you're referring to is the strategic blueprint does outline parking and has a sliding scale of highest demand to lowest demand, which helps you think about pricing as well as hours. So yes, there is a plan for adjusting the parking system in downtown, as I discussed, over the next few years, as we're able to purchase more meters and think about what those rates are. One of the things that the blueprint does is talk about the areas with the least demand. Either you don't charge in those areas, or you, it's cheaper, or it's the longest parking period time that you can do. The challenge with right now is we have meters in places, we have meters in all sorts of places, places we need them, places we don't need them. Some meters are many, many, many hours. You can park for many hours using the meter, and others, you can park for only 90 minutes. So we're really inconsistent because we did things in a piecemeal way. And so this is part of coming up with that holistic system for downtown.
Thank you. Another question. So one of our commenters this evening talked about accessible handicap parking spots and how ramp parking might not be amenable to handicap spots. Will handicap spots increase on-street downtown?
Yeah, that's a great question. So one of the things that the blueprint calls for is review of all the accessible parking in downtown to make sure that we are spreading it around, and so it's evenly balanced throughout downtown. And so yes, that is part of the work that we are doing to transform the parking system.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, I got to tell you, I appreciate everything that's in the packet, all the science and all of the work that has been done. And I appreciate the fact that you've come to educate us on a regular basis about this. There is, I do see a need for increased communication about this, not just that the headline says, "City Increases Parking Rates," but that city last fall gave us 90 free minutes in the ramps, you know, so that the alternatives are available, not just the sensationalism of increasing parking by 25 cents an hour. I would hope that that would be the message that goes out, is that these are the options for parking. And from what I hear from you, correct me if I'm wrong, this is an ordinance to be implemented over a few years. And along with downtown development. I was encouraged by our internal auditor to make sure that the city, or that the City Commission continues to keep current on this, the parking rates, and not turn it over to the parking entity itself, that we should have say over this. And what you've done here by adding parking spots, by looking at spots downtown that are not currently parking spots, but are excess driveways and things like that, that we definitely could make big changes in our parking for lower cost to the resident and more accessibility for the residents. So I hear, I hear everyone that's written and talked to us, especially those who are on the mall and were not even voting for that tonight, but I do think that we have to continue to move forward in our planning for downtown. And it's not going to be, we're not increasing it tomorrow, I don't think. What is the timeline for increasing our parking rates?
Sure. So on-street parking, the only place that would see the increase from $1.75 to $2 is the mall, where we have the new meters going in. With a planned installation, right now, July 29th. We're waiting for confirmation from the installer. So we have a three-day training program that will have folks out there in person, helping residents navigate the new system. We have a variety of other outreach and engagement associated with that. The overnight parking rates on here, they don't exist. So in order to create that overnight parking system, we need to set a fee scale for it. And so that those would be increased right now. I mean, that would be created right now, so one could choose to pay to park on the streets. Right now, you can choose to pay in a ramp, but the ramps may not be, you know, walking distance of where you live.
Yeah, so, okay, that makes sense to me, and I appreciate you and I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Commissioner Prado.
Christina, I just have one more question for you. So say hypothetically, excuse me, say hypothetically tonight, we pass this, okay? And even the retailers who were very much in favor find that it's not working as they had hoped, or vice versa, for people who are skeptics and didn't think it would work but find it works miraculously and want to see more of it. What mechanisms do we have planned or in place to make sure that we're doing a very intent job of listening and getting, and gathering real-time feedback to find out if it's working effectively or not? And then... And then secondarily, if we find it's not working, is there the ability to reel back or change things?
Sure. So to answer your second question, what's before you are maximums, which allows rate changes? Any good system needs to have the flexibility to make adjustments rather than plow forward with the same, whatever that is, if it's not working perfectly. I think that city staff has repeatedly shown that if something is not working, we will come back and say, "Not working, we need to make an adjustment." Right? And here's what we're going to propose, and here's how we're going to monitor it. And this is no different. Park Kalamazoo keeps track of parking counts, where people are parking, right? We have the Park Mobile app, which provides us great data. We have access in the ramps for collecting data. And so it will be monitored. And we will continue to monitor that and make changes accordingly. And in terms of, you know, keeping in touch, we have been working very closely with the chamber, the downtown chamber, over the last couple of years, in getting these changes off the ground. We are there every quarter, and parking is always on the agenda. We always make a presentation, talk to them, ask questions, let them know where we are, like we did at our meeting last Tuesday, where we talked about, about this work and the meter installation, and gave them approximate dates for when that would happen. And, one more thing, sorry. We are also working with a small group of focused mall businesses that have been helping us talk through the meter project in particular. And so we will keep up with them.
Commissioner Wilson.
Mayor, I just have a quick one for you, Christina. So beyond the rate increases, one of the concerns that I'm hearing from community members is the extended hours and the weekend hours. Regarding timeline, when do we expect those to be imposed, assuming that this ordinance passes?
Sure. So right now, the only changes that we're making right now are with the new meters on the mall. And so in that area, we'd be able to have them go until 8:00, if the ordinance is approved, and at the $2.00 rate. We will be working closely with Park Kalamazoo to review the parking, the existing meters, and the areas that are just signed but not metered, to review and set a schedule for updates over the, over the coming years. So remember, that's both new meters, as well as potential for different timing and rates based on location.
Thanks.
Other questions? Yes, Vice Mayor Hess.
So Christina, this is an ordinance that we'd be passing, that you will help play out over the next several years. What would happen should this ordinance not pass?
Sure, so a couple things, and I'll start with the parking system itself first. The parking system, while certainly not, I mean, I think we've given a lot of information on kind of the business why, and you know, this goes back to 2017 and the master plan, where perhaps the fiscal concerns about the parking system weren't as strong as they are now. Many years have passed since then, there are assets that are in need of repairs. We have not updated our rates over time, we've kind of left things static. We have not updated where we regulate parking with meters. And we have since, also instituted the 90-minute spree. So we have made changes to the system that serve a benefit to the downtown community, but not necessarily to the fiscal health of the system. So if we do not start to make changes, and again, this is not a light switch, this is something, again, that we're going to be implementing over time, but if we do not start making changes to the system, we're going to have to figure out how we are better supporting, how we are going to support the parking system. So, that part. If we do not change, if we do not provide, if the ordinance is not approved, then we will not have a overnight parking permit system. And so we are not providing residents, downtown developers, existing and future, with that use of space. That space sits there at night. We recognize, city staff recognizes that it is a useful commodity and provides, provides a benefit. So if we do not approve the ordinance, there is no overnight parking permit system, and overnight parking will not be permitted in downtown, because right now, it's not permitted unless signed or unless a permit system exists. Third, in the areas, no, I'll stick with those two. Those are the two biggest, the two biggest changes. Again, the ordinance, if you do not approve the ordinance tonight, the meters on the mall can still go in, because this is not regulating the meters that are going in. It just regulates their operation and their rate based on their location on the mall. So the other two are the, are the, are the negative impacts for not approving the ordinance.
Thank you.
Other questions for Christina Anderson? Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Christina, for the overnight parking, so if it's only between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., what happens after that 6:00 a.m. with that person that has it overnight parking? Will they have to go out at 6:00 a.m. and move their car?
Sure.
Or tell me about that.
In downtown, they'll be subject to the meter, or whatever those regulations are in that location. So if the meter turns on at 8:00, then they will have to move the car at 8:00 or pay the meter. Now, if that is too much of an inconvenience, "I don't want to have to deal with that, I want to sleep in", you know, "I have a guest, we're not going to do that", you can choose to overnight park in the ramp and pay similar fees to what is listed here. It's just about giving a location opportunity for something closer to that residence.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, and I think I did have another question that I don't think was actually answered. With the, with the individuals and the residents that you've spoken to downtown, how many of them, if you know off the top of your head, just a ballpark area, do not have a place to park if they live downtown? When I say do not have a place to park, I mean, the developer did not develop parking for them.
Sure. I don't know the answer to that. There is a developer here who may want to speak to their particular project and the parking that exists there. There is a, and I said this before, I'm going to say it again, there's a push-pull for, for development anywhere, but especially in downtown, right? You can use the limited land and the costs associated with providing parking on-site. You can take the path of, "Well, I'm in downtown, there's a lot of things that people can walk to, they're going to have fewer cars on providing, fewer parking, and guests just kind of figure it out." You know, and there's, there's things in between. So developers and existing residences are kind of caught in the middle of those two things. We don't require parking in downtown. Market studies, but you can provide parking up to a certain maximum. And downtown developers are telling us that by their market studies right now in downtown Kalamazoo, that some amount of parking is necessary. And again, this is space that is not being used and that is available for cars overnight and during the day.
Okay, and then one last question. When we updated the zoning codes, and there was a lot of work on adding and removing parking spaces, like when someone coming to do a development, did we ever take that down? Did we say, you know, did we lower the amount of parking that a developer had to use?
Absolutely.
When they built something?
We do not require, we have no minimum parking in the city. You may provide up to a certain amount, because, you know, one of the things that we were trying to be thoughtful of is impervious surface and then space for parking. So we do not require it. Developers right now feel that is an important asset to the buildings that are going in downtown. The goal is to maximize the number of units, residential units in downtown. Providing space off-site, like on-street parking, allows more flexibility in a development to add more units.
Other questions for Planner Anderson? All right, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Planner Anderson, for fielding all those questions, that's very helpful. I wanted to add one other question here, but it will be for Manager Ritzma. So just a reminder here, just to set the stage for this question. And that, that is this, is that in 2023, you might remember, the city took back the parking system. Up until prior to that, it was managed through our relationship with the DDA. That really came to unsustainable point, and the city took back the parking system, '23, just a year ago. And just another thing, as a reminder, not unlike our water and sewer system, our parking system is an enterprise fund. Like other enterprise funds that we have, for example, related to our golf courses, water and sewer, and that sort of thing. And in those enterprise funds, the model is, is that the fees that are charged support the operating expenses of that enterprise fund. And so that, those fees support operating and debt service. So think about it, there is a great deal of expensive infrastructure that is part of our, you know, operating cost in the parking enterprise fund, not only building a ramp, but maintaining a ramp, as well as everything else. So we're in a situation now where we're talking about, within that construct, not making any changes to our revenue, which we haven't made for years and years and years, even though we have expenses in that enterprise fund. So Manager Ritzma, do you mind making just a little bit of overview, reminding us not only about our 2024 budget, but our 2023 budget as it relates to the parking enterprise fund?
Yeah, so looking back at 2023, the parking system had a $700,000 loss. And in 2024, the adopted budget, it's a half a million dollar loss. Now, we have some reserves in, in the fund, a little over 2 million. But as was mentioned earlier, there's a lot of capital needs in the system as well that we need funding for. So just another piece of this, going back to when we originally looked at allocating ARPA dollars, if you recall, there was a parking system revenue replacement piece. And we had shown that revenue replacement over the five years, and I think we only did like the first two years. So I think some of that's playing in here too. But bottom line is, it's the city system, we need it to be solvent. If it's not, it comes back to the city general fund anyways. And, you know, with the extensive engagement that's been done and support from a lot of the stakeholders, you know, it's our recommendation that we move forward with this, this evening.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Any questions in particular to the budget and the enterprise fund for Manager Ritzma at this time? All right, thank you so much, Commissioner. Seeing none, now is the opportunity for anybody who's here in the chambers to comment on this item. Please come forward, you'll have three minutes. Please state your name and whether you live in the city. Yes, please go ahead. Don't be polite, we're all waiting.
Thank you. Good evening. Kurt Artema, I am a city resident. And I also serve on the city's DDA and DEGA boards as well. And I also work for a local real estate development company that has built approximately 236 units of housing in downtown Kalamazoo in the last four years. And we're excited to continue to do more. And I'll be brief, because we have three minutes. So I'm going to focus on the overnight parking piece. So right now, the on-street parking overnight doesn't exist. So the fee that's being shown here, right now, it's not a change from free to charge fee. It's, it doesn't exist. And so there is no overflow parking onto the streets. When we look at the number of spaces available for housing units downtown, the parking is the limiting factor, because right now, as Christina noted, the market requires some parking associated with each housing unit. It's about one-to-one, so one unit per space. In some cases, it's a little higher, about one and a half, depending on the types of units that you have. And if you have a roommate situation, then there's a need for another space as well in that scenario. So I mention this because when we talk about housing, if we're going to add parking into a project, a structured parking space is about $25,000 to $40,000. So each unit of housing would have another, say, $30,000, $35,000 added to the cost of the unit. So that only increases the cost of the rent that has to be charged for a bank or pro forma to work on a project. So when the spaces are there, available on the street, sitting vacant overnight, not only is it a chance for the city to capture revenue, but it's a chance for more housing to be created without the addition of all those parking spaces. And I guess the second piece of that is, if you can accommodate the parking on the street and you can accommodate it in a parking structure, it has to get built somewhere off the street. So that ends up being sometimes an adjacent house, or an older home, or something that gets torn down and becomes a six-to-eight-space parking lot covered with asphalt. And that's the reality of providing housing in a downtown. When you can't park on the street, you have to pull it off the street. And so it either goes into a deck or into one of those surface lots. And I don't think either scenario is ideal, where either the cost of the space itself gets added into the unit, so the $25,000 to $30,000, whatever it might be for construction costs, or the land that's allocated for that surface parking space. So I just, I speak to that because I think it could be beneficial to the community. It's no change, except for adding parking, adding an option. And also, in addition, you could bring, you could have guests that could have a spot to park overnight as well. So I think that's the end of my time, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm going to go ahead and read this because I'm wordy. My name is Jessica Thompson. I'm a business owner on the Kalamazoo Mall, coordinator of downtown Kalamazoo shops, and I'm a director on the DDA and DEGA boards. I wanted to share my support of the parking meters and the ordinance changes in downtown, because they will encourage the use of the multiple parking ramps, offering 90 minutes of free parking, keeping on-street spaces open for those who need them most, like those making quick trips, our elderly and differently-abled folks. Overnight parking and these changes are needed. This is crucial for our downtown success, and it seems that there's, seems, there's some confusion around it. There are always going to be those negative headlines, no matter what we do. There are always going to be people who draw negativity from positive headlines. And there are always going to be people who are hesitant of change. Feedback from our local businesses, which I speak to on a weekly basis, and to the vast majority are in favor of this. Most have sent in letters of support if they were unable to attend tonight as well. We've had extensive studies that have been done multiple times here in Kalamazoo that show free on-street parking in high-demand areas actually negatively impacts our businesses. Implementing these changes can boost downtown revenue by millions annually and ensure prime parking spaces are available for customers. Not just those who park in one space all day and then don't move their car. While concerns about the impact of paid parking are common, expert studies and data from other cities show the opposite. Today's customers expect premium parking and value the turnover of on-street spaces. I hope that we're able to focus on positive impact rather than negativity from those who may not be directly affected. We have the data and expertise needed to make this work, and we would hate to lose our free 90-minute parking if this ordinance is not approved. Thank you for considering this important step to enhance our downtown. The time is right for these changes, and we are excited about the benefits they, they will bring to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Joe Troop. I am the regional manager of Gazelle Sports Downtown here. I oversee the Kalamazoo and the Holland stores. I'm also a resident of Kalamazoo for almost 30 years now and absolutely love this. I'm also a resident of Kalamazoo for almost 30 years now and absolutely love this city. I'm very happy to go right after Ms. Jessica here because I cannot emphatically echo enough what those words mean. Our businesses are affected by people who just use those spaces to park all day, move their cars a couple feet, you know, just keep it going. We need that parking to move often. If we can't get that parking changed, the hours have to change, everything needs to change. My business is one of the ones that stays open a little later at night. The moment 4:30 rolls around, those spots are filled for the rest of the evening. So nobody moves after that. So this affects my business drastically. I just really hope that we can move forward with this. Things are going to change, the city's going to be a lot different in four to eight years, and we need to start working towards that now. So thanks.
Thank you.
So, hi, I'm Tony Kennedy, and I appreciate everyone's feedback on this topic. And honestly, other than veteran, I've not really been very passionate about anything so much as I am today about this. You know, I heard business, I just, you know, Commissioner Hess, you said the other day, what's the solution? And I heard a solution, that let's get those parking meters out there and maybe increase the rates and get those people moving, et cetera. But right now, with all the projects, it's about the projects. It's not about, you know, it probably is the right time, but there's so much going on downtown right now that one more thing is probably going to tip people over. I don't understand how you don't see that, or you can't feel that, you know? I'm not saying you're not on the right track. You know, we love the businesses. Without the businesses, you know, there's nothing to buy and shop. But at the same time, when I'm listening to everybody and I listen to Christina, everything was, well, the businesses just met this week. Well, what about the residents? I mean, I walked down the street today, and that's not what I heard. You know, I didn't do it every day, but at least I took time to go down there and ask. And what they're finding to be chaotic is the construction project, and then now you want to increase parking. And it just doesn't seem fair to anybody at this point. And all I'm saying to you, and I'm challenging you to do, is to, you know, I don't want to kick the can down the road, et cetera, but maybe think about implementing this when things are less chaotic downtown, when it's, you know, when more people are coming downtown. I saw that it said that they were going to increase the hours to 8:00 PM. I asked a couple that was walking down, and I said, how do you feel about parking? And they said, oh, well, you know, after 6:00, it's not a big deal. I said, how do you feel if they move it to 8:00 PM? We're not coming down here. You know, I don't know who you're asking, because the people that I'm asking, that I'm talking to, are people that either live in a neighborhood or come down and frequent and are regular people and not just businesses. I'm not trying to take anything away from any business. All I'm saying is reconsider this, say no right now, and down the road, when everything settles, the construction projects, et cetera, and when your businesses can be a little bit more viable, like market fresh, et cetera, you know?
Again, my name is Vince Leveri, citizen of Kalamazoo, Vine Neighborhood. And I'm going to start off something just really off the topic, but I moved here in '91, I've never been here before, this is my one chance to say this. Scott Borling and Shelby Moss are tremendous in the way they administer elections. I'm on a county board, I'm not going to mention which one, because I don't want to confuse why I'm here, but I got a chance to praise Scott and Shelby, I'm going to take it. And there's many things been, that are part of this ordinance, and I, you know, what happened with overnight parking that needs to be dealt with. But I'm downtown at least three times a week, and the rates that I'm hearing, parking meters all of a sudden is going to cost me nine bucks, three bucks a day for my hour and a Hour and a half, I can get a lot of things done, I can just eat at a restaurant, I can go shopping, I can stop and get an ice cream. It starts charging me, I'm going to go elsewhere, just places on Main, places on Michigan, Stadium, Southwest, all kinds of places I can go without having to pay for parking. And I don't want to leave downtown Kalamazoo because it's very special as it is. If there are people abusing the system, ticket them. If we need to raise more money, raise the fees on the tickets. I think that's going to have much more effect. Somebody gets a $30, $40 ticket they got to pay, they're going to not abuse the system. I think that would be very effective. When it all comes down, are you going to put paid parking in front of the post office? Are we going to have, are we going to lose our 93 minutes when I want to go to the bank? That's going to change where I bank if I have to start paying just to stop in and do something at the bank. This changing from 6:00 to 8:00, to 8:00 PM, that's going to change a lot of things, that's going to impact how often I'm going to Farmer's Alley Theater, because that's going to increase my expenses. And I don't make that much money as a retired person, and I can just absorb all kinds of increases. We're going to cut enough of free parking for the library. The one thing I'm going to do, no matter what you all do, I'm going to...
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, the recommended action is a motion to adopt the ordinances and fee resolution. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Prado.
Second.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. Discussion, Commissioners? Commissioner Cooney?
Mayor, so I'm willing to support on-street parking overnight, because that's going to affect the people that are already living downtown. That's not going to discourage anybody from coming downtown. And if the merchants in the mall are saying they need to have meters in the mall, okay, I can go with that. But I don't, at this, I understand the fiscal responsibility, and that's real, and we have to do that. But we're in a crisis now. These people who have businesses around, not in the mall, but around, are saying, hey, we're getting hurt here. And I think that we need to suspend anything beyond those two things until we start to clear up some of this traffic problem that we got. This talks a lot more than overnight parking, and it talks a lot more than the things in the mall. I would be willing to vote for those two things. I don't want to vote for anything beyond that.
Thank you. Christiane Cooney, other discussion? Yes, Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. We've heard a lot about housing and developing new housing downtown, and there was a word that was mentioned earlier about affordable housing downtown. We do not have affordable housing downtown for the people that are suffering from housing insecurity right now. And the other piece is, there is a price that we have to pay as individuals wanting to live in a downtown area. I'm not talking about the businesses, I am in full support of those meters going on the mall. However, when you choose to live in a downtown area, there are prices to pay for that. And so to come back and say we want to put this burden on the entire community, it does not sit well with me. I'm in support of those meters going in on the mall, but as this ordinance is right now, there is too much. We continue to ask the community to sacrifice their quality of life for all of the construction that is going on in our streets. What I heard earlier today, there is a detour to the detour now, and that is so true. And I'm frustrated about it. It takes me three minutes to get to City Hall, it now takes me 15 minutes to get to City Hall. So I feel that us doing this right now, we are asking community to just do way too much with all of the things that are happening right now. And at this time, I support the meters on the mall, but I cannot support this ordinance at this time.
Vice Mayor Hess?
So questioning, Christina, are you still here? Question for Christina, again, you know, we talk about not now during construction. From what I understand, I don't think increases are going in during construction. This is a change in the ordinance, to be rolled out at a future date.
What's in the ordinance changes the rates for the ramps. It adds the overnight parking, and it adds a maximum for the on-street parking. What is going to be phased in is an update of all the on-street parking, where we review what should be free, what should be charged, and for how long. So with this ordinance, the rate change and the time change is going in on the mall. It is not planned for immediate impact in other areas, we're going to have to come up with a phasing plan for what that looks like.
Do you see that phasing plan happening before our planned constructions are done, that are happening this summer, that are causing such chaos?
No, this is over multiple years. So, no, what's planned for the summer is the meters on the mall, and if the ordinance is approved, the overnight parking permit system.
Okay.
The other changes are a bit longer term, and I think we're going to have to come up with a phase-in and ramping plan, and some of that has to do with technology. Some of the meters can't, the other meters are too old to accept changes. So the on-street parking elsewhere is not changing with this action right now. We will phase it in.
Okay, and I would say that before any phase-in, that we provide clear, concise, consistent communication to relieve any sense of chaos that people are feeling. This is, that's what I'm hearing from some of our commenters and some of the emails that I've received, that people are confused, and we need to alleviate that confusion. But from what I understand, we're not charging any more right now, except on the mall and for the overnight parking.
Commissioner Prado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your patience for a minute while I work through this, but I will tell you, this has been a tough one for me, too. And given the political environment right now, I want to make sure to just overemphasize this fact, that I have a tremendous amount of respect for everybody on this dais, even when we disagree, and certainly the people who came here, who I have a tremendous amount of respect for, Tony and Vince, you know, you guys come in here for your feedback as well. But I will tell you, I have gone out of my way to try to really listen to folks on this one. In fact, yesterday, I was going to pick up two big bags of ice from the store for my son's birthday party, and somebody caught me and said they wanted to talk to me about this issue itself, who is a resident. Let's be frank, the timing of this sucks, right? I mean, you could not ask for a more challenging time for all this tremendous infrastructure and transformation going on in our community. But you know, the thing that really excites me about it is thinking about what life is going to be like come November, when we have streets that have been dug down to the guts, and hopefully it's the last time we have to dig up those streets for 40-some years, because the next time a water main breaks, you know, or the way it is right now, we're just one water break, water main break away from just digging up the thing we just put in a year before. So we can't emphasize enough how much I appreciate the patience of this community and just the endurance to try to get through this, because the juice will be worth the squeeze. But it is undeniably frustrating right now, and I definitely want to recognize that and acknowledge that. I think it's critical that we listen to the people who have the most to lose. And the people who have the most to lose in this particular scenario are the people who are telling us that, and not universally, but mostly telling us, that this would be transformative for their business. We heard from Gazelle Sports, who's been an anchor in our downtown for decades. We heard from another retailer, from Be Joyful, about that. We've also heard from a number of retailers, even the organization that represents small business in their community had the reasonable belief that they could represent and write us a letter to say they're speaking on behalf of the community. I would not support this if had not eight months ago, we provided 90 minutes of free parking in the ramps. That has been an awesome amenity. You know, I mean, if you're going to a movie downtown, it's perfect enough time to make a run to a couple stores, or to go out to lunch with somebody and not have to pay a dime. And I've used it multiple times downtown. And in fact, you know, for the people who are talking about how challenging it is to like, sometimes you have to make a couple trips around to find that 90-minute parking space on a strip, well, some of those strips only have eight or 10 parking spaces, and sometimes you'll drive around and then one doesn't free up. I'll tell you, in those parking structures, there's a heck of a lot of parking spaces. So you can pretty much reassure, if you find one of those two parking structures, you're going to find a spot, and it's going to be free for 90 minutes. I think it's really important that we think about that accessibility component of it, but it sounds like Christina really made sure to emphasize that that's going to be a priority focus. I'm also still concerned about City Hall, and I really encourage us to look into like best practices around to figure out how that works. Don, you're spot on about like the headline, right? It's about clickbait, and you know, it's the thing that is, you know, going to get people most wound up about the rate increase. But I kind of beg the media and people who are, have an opportunity to communicate this to the community, to do it in a fair and balanced way, to not emphasize just the parking rate increase, to recognize that the city had the foresight eight months ago, even before this process came forward, to make sure that was the first piece that was implemented, was making sure that there's ample 90-minute parking available before any of this was Commissioner, Vice Mayor Hess mentioned this, we absolutely need to make sure that there is really good concise marketing that happens. The other thing, too, is, we talked about the overnight street parking and the five free passes, that is going to increase economic activity. And the reason why is, you know, every person who has their boo visiting, or a friend from college, you know, that person, instead of rushing away in the morning because they're worried they're going to get a ticket, they're going to stick it out. And you know what they're going to do when they wake up and they take their time getting out in the morning? They're going to go for their cup of coffee, they're going to go for breakfast, and oh, hey, by the way, I need to go get my new pair of shoes at Gazelle Sports. I believe that will drive economic activity. The city manager mentioned this, that this will not, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board, because the system will not be fiscally sustainable if we don't pass this tonight. And then the other thing, too, is, you know, we could say, hey, well, this isn't a good time. You know, we know that, at least through almost the end of the 2020s, we're going to be in the thick of this transformation downtown, so there's not really going to necessarily be a good time in the foreseeable future. And I'll just end it with this as well, the last point that I'll make here is that, you know, asking Christina for this as well assured us that they're going to actively seek continuous feedback. I know they have some relationships with Western Michigan University and working with people to make sure that they're doing a great job of listening to community, listening to the business owners, to make sure that we're not off-base, and that we adjust accordingly if something doesn't work. So knowing that this is not going to be a popular choice tonight, I still am going to make the decision to support this tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Commissioner Deckert?
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, Commissioner Prado, we are all friends here, and sometimes we agree and disagree, but we still, you know, do what we believe is right. And for me, I believe that those parking meters should go within the mall, because I've been down the mall many times, and I have noticed cars parked there for a very long time, and I know they're not in there eating tons of popcorn and candy, right? I do think that for the overnight parking, and I guess I still never got an answer to this question of how many residents don't have parking that's downtown, I mean, that's really my question, too. You know, residents that live downtown, I mean, why would you live downtown and not have parking? Of course, again, a lot of residents that live downtown are kind of trying to move away from cars, and that's why we're trying to make everything a connected city and complete all of these bike lanes, so you don't have to have so much parking. In retrospect, the parking system... In retrospect, the, the parking system has been obsolete for some time, I believe. Um, and it will take time to update things. I am, I, I agree with Commissioner Cooney. I will, I am supporting the, uh, the meters on the mall. As far as the overnight parking, whoo, that's a tough one. I mean, I, I understand what our developers and say. Uh, Mr. Artemizy comes up here and he speaks about, you know, being able to, you know, what it costs to build a parking structure and, you know, how he's going to, if they need be, tear down an old house, which hopefully, they won't, um, to build a parking lot, um, to accommodate what they're building, which is bringing housing into the downtown area. I do agree with Commissioner Hoffman when she says, when you choose to live in a city that is downtown area, you can go to Grand Rapids, you can go to Lansing, you can go to Detroit, anywhere you know that you're gonna pay more money when you live downtown. I mean, I go to Chicago, you talk about having guest parking. There is no guest parking in Chicago. I had to drive around fifteen blocks to find a spot. They, they, they don't get guest parking in Chicago. Um, again, Chicago is a much better city than we are, but I still think of that in retrospect, when I drive around it, I'm trying to find a place, too. So on the overnight parking, I understand that it's gonna bring revenue in. If I was looking at some of those rates, um, really what we're adding, if we did all of these changes right now, what would be adding to the fiscal budget is just over seventy-four thousand dollars. And I'm sorry, uh, city manager, you're saying we're at a five hundred, what loss are we at right now?
For this year, uh, budgeted five hundred thousand.
Oh, you budgeted five hundred thousand?
Yeah.
And so where are we at within, are we?
Yeah, I, so do we know the fiscal impact of this to the entire parking fund? Has that been estimated? I'm asking staff back there.
Well, we've got the, it says, you know, if we, for the fiscal impact, if we do these estimated cost monthly revenues and the impact of it, it says it's gonna go up to seventy-four thousand dollars. Is that what I'm reading correctly within the packet here?
Uh, Commissioner Deckard, I, I, I don't understand where you're coming up with seventy-four thousand dollars. What I will say is that, um, the fiscal impact, the changes, because this is something that we're doing over time, it will depend on the speed that we do it.
Okay, well, I'm just looking at what is in the fiscal impact rate survey that is within the packet, and, uh, maybe I'm just reading it incorrectly.
No, I'm sorry, I just, I just didn't have that document in front of me. I thought you were doing math based on rate changes.
Oh, no, no. Um, so yeah, I'm gonna let another commissioner speak right now.
Commissioner Wilson.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Um, I, I won't belabor my points, as most of them has been stated already by my colleagues. Um, I love the plan, I just do not love the timing. Um, I'm in support of the Kalamazoo Mall, uh, meters being installed, and, um, I can see the overnight parking, um, being implemented as well. Um, but I can't support this ordinance as it currently, uh, stands. And, um, I would love to see a revision made in the near future for us to address the, uh, couple of points that we all can agree on, uh, which are the, uh, meter parking on the mall and, um, potentially the overnight parking.
Other discussion, commissioners? Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, yeah, I totally agree with what you're saying. Um, there's, it's too much vagueness. Someplace down the line, we're gonna get some other kinds of things that we could put in some places, and it's gonna be, let's wait till it's time to do that. We could vote tonight, that would help get some money for, I don't like spending five hundred thousand dollars on that. I would much rather spend that on affordable housing or something else. So, I think we can get an agreement tonight on those two issues, as you said. And when, when it's time for these other things to come, bring them to us, and then we can go over them. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, Chris. I mean, we have to have some way to subsidize it. We have to pay for this, there's no question, this is not free. But it's too vague, what, what it means. And, and to say to the community, we're gonna raise the rates, and we're gonna extend the hours, the people are gonna hear that, and, but we're really saying, at some point. And, and we don't need to say that right now, because that's not gonna help people downtown.
Commissioner Prado.
It's all really helpful discussion. You know, the thing I think about, and I can go back to this, well, this as well, is that, you're right, we have heard from retailers who say that they're hurting right now because of the construction. But those are also the same people who are here tonight telling us, this would be one thing that would help them turn the tide on that pain. And so that's the part where I, I struggle, because you're right, it is, it is a lot right now. And they're telling us, it is taking a toll on them. And we heard that, that very visceral, um, you know, testimony tonight from some of the businesses in some of the areas even outside of downtown. But those same people are the same people who are saying, in this sea of so many things that we're having to go upriver with, to, to, are, are challenged with, this is something that could help us turn that tide. And, you know, I, I remember back in, in 2020, when we were doing the social drinking district, there were people who were very negative about that. But you darn well better believe, if somebody's telling me that's gonna give them something that's gonna help them succeed and thrive right now in an environment that's really hard, I'm gonna take advantage of every opportunity it is to try to help them survive that. And that's what I hear them saying. And I'm telling you, you know, like, I hear people who say, you know, how challenging it's gonna be, or might change their decision. But, but I, but I also hope the public hears how hard we as a community have to step up to support these people. And if that means driving around the block another time, or it means like, you know, add another five minutes to our, to our stop so that we can help keep these people alive and thriving, I'm gonna do it. And, you know, and, and like I say, I mean, I totally understand where everybody's coming from. It is not a good time right now. But the challenging part is, I'm not sure that five years from now, we're gonna say, it's a good time either. And, you know, we know that city staff has spent years working on this. I mean, this was a plan from 2019 and then got delayed because of the pandemic. And so, you know, the time wasn't probably right then. I don't know if it's gonna be right five years from now, but I know right now, we have an opportunity to vote on something, that there are people who are telling us that with, with this vote, that this is something that would give them relief. And the, the meters would give them a relief, because it would create customer churn. And then the overnight parking options for people would provide relief, because it's gonna provide more customers and more flow of people earlier in the day and on weekends, when people are staying overnight downtown. And, and so, you know, again, I'm not trying to set, second, necessarily, second-guess people, but I, I really do think this is something where we could show good faith to our, to these small businesses and say, we heard you, we know this is something that can make a difference for you, and we're gonna do everything we can to support you right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Prado. Vice Mayor Hess?
And too, I think there's a level of trust here with the work that's been done over, since 2019 on this system, that, uh, this is an ordinance, it's quite lengthy, but it's an ordinance that without which, we can't make these changes in the parking system. Is, is that correct? And, and so, we need the, the language in the ordinance to be able to roll out changes in the parking system at the right time when, when the folks who are, with the parking system is working on this. Um, it's not gonna happen this summer, um, except for the overnight and the metered parking. The metered parking in the mall isn't even in the ordinance. We're voting on an ordinance to amend the sections within the Kalamazoo City Code, the traffic code related to overnight parking meter rates and operational hours of meters. Um, and unless they have the ordinance, uh, under wraps, unless they have the ordinance, they cannot do that in future time. This is what I heard Christina saying. Um, and so, I wanna give them the tool of the ordinance to be able to work with this system, to keep it fiscally solvent, and to make sure that we can, uh, continue to grow our downtown.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I completely agree with everything that's happening in downtown Kalamazoo. Um, but it is not just downtown Kalamazoo residents and businesses. We have people from surrounding neighborhoods who frequent downtown every day, every single day. And so, we continue to talk about economic development, but we have rarely heard in our last few months of this year about talking about our community members, our residents, and their quality of life. And so, for me, downtown is going to thrive, because that's the city's focus. Let's talk about our surrounding neighborhoods and how this change will affect them as well. We had a gentleman say, he comes downtown three times a, a, a week, and on a fixed income. I heard that, I felt that. And so, again, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this ordinance. If this could be revisited at a later time, great. But if we're going for it now, my mind is thinking about the people that come into downtown, who work downtown, but can't afford to live downtown, can't afford to shop downtown, we need to do something about that.
Commissioner Deckard.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a question for, uh, a city attorney, Liao. So I'm looking in here, so there are one, two, thir- one, two, three, there are four ordinances that would be passing in this one, um, agenda item. Are we able to pass certain ones and not the other? Would we be able to word that a certain way? How, how would that work? Is it because it's all been put together in one, it's either all or nothing?
Before I answer that question, there are three ordinances and a resolution. The commission is able, I mean, these are all put on one item. The intent from, from the staff was to adopt them all in one motion, but nothing prevents you from separating and only adopting those that you wish to adopt. The only question I have is that I would have to rely on Christina Anderson to distinguish which of the ordinance there relate to those general areas that there seems to be some agreement in adopting, one, one of them being the Kalamazoo Mall, uh, the meters in the Kalamazoo, and possibly the overnight parking. I would rely just to be on the safe side, since CPED drafted these ordinances, to clarify which ordinances relate to the different issues at play here tonight, and, and the resolution.
Quick question, just before you start. The purpose of the resolution, whether that an ordinance, Attorney Liao?
You're setting the rates, that's the only difference. There isn't anything being regulated, like individual behavior, on how they're to conduct, uh, themselves out in the city. That's what the ordinances do. The resolution just basically sets rates.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Liao. Christina.
So, um, what I thought I would do is quickly talk about, um, each ordinance by number, and just quickly tell you what it, what it does. Um, let me, forgive me, I'm doing this on my computer, so I, um, okay. Um, section thirty-six, one-seventy, parking limited between two AM and six AM of the Kalamazoo City Code of Ordinances. So the changes made to, um, to this ordinance allow for, uh, the, uh, permit system to be set up. One, hold on, I apologize. One-seventy-five, uh, is the ordinance that, um, sets, uh, is a, a lot of housekeeping. It talks about, you know, when meters are active, you know, the, that, the, the different parking tools that we use, uh, the mobile pay and those type of things. Um, and so that is one-seventy-five. So again, pay and advance boxes, which are kiosks, um, other mobile tools that we use. Um, a lot of this is just getting our, bringing us into, uh, current parking management times. Thirty-six, one-eighty-five is a schedule of fines and late fees for parking violations. And so this is a setting that there is a, if you park overnight without an active permit, um, uh, your permit's expired, you don't have one, it's a fee structure. Uh, but how we, um, how we can set our penalties, uh, so that is associated with the overnight parking. And, uh, thirty-six, uh, thirty-six, one-eighty-seven, um, is also tied to the overnight parking and setting up the permit system, which makes me think I said the first one wrong. So I apologize for that. No, one-seventy, one-eighty-five, and one-eighty-seven are all tied to overnight parking. Um, I was, I corrected the way I said it the first time. Um, and one-seventy-five is, uh, parking meters on and off-street parking facilities, pay and boxes, um, and, uh, bringing the, the code up to, um, current standards. That's how they're divided. It's complicated, because we're working within the existing set of ordinances. And so we worked very carefully with Charlie Bear in Attorney Liao's office to make sure that the updates went into the proper sections. Um, and that's why there are multiple ordinances before you tonight.
Managerisma.
Christina, um, where is the mall referenced, uh, for meters and so forth?
There's not going to be a mall reference.
There's nothing in there for that.
Nope, because we can put-
Can already do that.
Meters can go in on the mall. It, so this is, this ordinance is not about putting meters in on the mall. The only thing that these changes allow is for the parking meters on the mall to go to eight, rather than five, and to charge two dollars, rather than one-seventy-five. So there's not an ordinance about mall, the mall specifically, or mall meters. Um, the changes have to do with the timing that the meters can run and the rate. Meters can go in, as long as you're using the same rate structure that exists now. So there's not one associated with specifically that. Is that helpful? No? You're shaking your head?
I, I, I guess what you're saying, that the only thing that can be adopted separately as an ordinance are the ordinance, the two ordinances, one-seventy and one-eighty- one-eighty-seven, that implement the overnight parking permits. That's the only ones that-
Could be severed from the other?
Can be severed, because-
Right, and then not approving, um, one, uh, the other one is, leaves the housekeeping items behind, um, with pay boxes and, and meters and the technology that we use now.
Okay, and the resolution?
The resolution, right. The resolution sets the rates, the maximum rates or the not-to-exceed rates.
So perhaps not as distinct and separate as we would like to imagine. Would you say that that's the case?
The, the only one that's distinct is the overnight parking.
Only one's distinct.
The two ordinances that relate to overnight parking.
Tied in with each other, okay. Commissioner Cooney?
What has to be done to allow the meters to go in, in, in the mall? What has to be done? Nothing, they're just gonna happen? Okay, okay.
The thing that would be different, Commissioner Cooney, is that were all this to pass, those meters, which are limited to be a dollar seventy-five, could be two dollars, so they could be a quarter more an hour. And the time could be extended. Now, it would go to five, which our standard time, it would, the new ordinance would allow it to go to eight. So twenty-five cents more per hour, extended by three hours in the evening. That would be the difference on the mall. Uh, let me see here. So anyway, just trying to figure out a way, you know, to move forward, if we can here. Yeah, I mean, housekeeping is- yeah, I mean, housekeeping is a relatively simple one. So, so I guess, you know, at this point, and we do have a motion on the floor, we could go ahead and vote on that, just as it is, all right? Uh, or we could kind of talk through that and see, I mean, we could try that as a test vote, I guess, and see where we go and then come back again if we want to somehow kind of slice and dice these things. I guess, just adding to discussion, I just, just one thing I, I do want to remind us all about, you know, is that, I don't know if there's gonna be a good time to do this for five-plus years. I mean, we're doing this horrendous redo of everything. We haven't even started on the Kalamazoo Avenue, that won't even be the next year, or Michigan for the two-way conversion. I mean, this is going on and on and on. So, we're gonna have a traffic redirecting nightmare scenario that's gonna last for a while. And, you know, I, I had the opportunity to meet with many of the business owners who were here tonight multiple times, actually encouraged individuals to come here and express their concerns. And we, I've been talking to City Manager's Office about it, what, what can we do, talked to Director Baker about it, what are responses to that traffic issue? So, there's that. I mean, I would suggest that that, that is a separate issue from parking, uh, although maybe they stack. But, you know, if we're talking about, they don't have parking meter issue over Midtown Fresh, or they don't have parking meter issue over at Park Street Market, you know, two critically important businesses for us. So, so there's that. Uh, another thing, just to keep in mind, is that, you know, we haven't increased the rates in a while. I, I've seen that Grand Rapids is in the process of increasing their rates right now, big news story about that. Uh, another thing I would suggest is that we have no control over the media, and the media has often taken our actions and decided to pull some little piece out of it that, in my estimation, misrepresents what happened and made a big thing out of it. I really trust that our local media is now more responsible than that and certainly would not do that again. But anyway, uh, that all said, we're ultimately going to be tasked with a painful responsibility, which is how do we keep our parking system fiscally, you know, viable? And how long are we going to wait to try to address that? The longer we do wait, the bigger change it's gonna be, whether it's five years or 10 years from now. And in not too long, Commissioner Cooney, we're gonna be pulling money out of our general fund to pay for the parking system, right? So, that's just something, I'm not saying we gotta decide that tonight. It's something that's to contemplate, what, now that we're responsible for it, what's our plan, I guess, to, to pay for it. And we can't figure all that out right now, I don't know. But, uh, anyway, it's something to contemplate. So, all those things together, is there a sense from my good colleagues here, what would be an acceptable way for all of us to move forward together on this? Any thoughts about that? Commissioner Cooney?
I mean, if you wanna vote on the whole thing and see how that goes and then, and have us, after that, another vote on overnight parking, um, I think that would work.
And is that sufficiently separate to vote? Here's another thing, you know, and an ordinance change, we gotta come here twice. So, if we, or change this around, is that, is our hearing count? Are, are we making material changes? Or are we gonna need to come through again with this, Attorney Liao?
If I understand what you're saying, Mayor, if only a one or maybe two ordinances are adopted and the others aren't, what happens after that for the others? Those that were not approved, they basically have to come back again, start the process over again. Yes.
A set of hearing and then two weeks later vote on it, based on our ordinance?
Yes, sir.
So, right. Did you have something for the good of the order? Commissioner Ritzman, anything else from you on this? I, I have to say, I, I'm, I'm not 100% clear what we're getting as we're starting to slice and dice this. I, I may be, is it patently obvious to everybody else? It's not entirely clear to me. Um, Vice Mayor Hesper, are you gonna say something?
I really feel it's about adopting these ordinances. We have to have the housekeeping in order to move our, to, in order to allow the parking system to move forward. We have to have that. And everyone has said that we should have the overnight parking option. Are those the ordinances that we're voting on?
The overnight, the, the parking system, yeah.
So, there's multiple ordinances dealing with the overnight parking. There's housekeeping that adjusts the time and other housekeeping items. And then there's the resolution. Overnight parking permit system needs the resolution, at least part of the resolution, because we need to set the fees for the overnight parking permit.
Correct.
Because they're done differently. Fees are done and rates are done through a resolution versus an ordinance.
Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this will not change anything to, will this change any other fees? It will, right? It goes up to a quarter, the $2 for the hourly, the ramp, and that's for all of the-
The resolution sets a series of maximum rates for surface lots, ramps, on-street parking, and then the overnight permit fees. What I have said is that the cha- the immediate change for on-street parking would be with the mall meters, because they're new technology, new devices. We can install them and set the rates, um, and the timing accordingly. We can talk about, we have a, um, we could talk about phasing in the rest, and we have a guide to phase in the rest. We have a plan. We have the strategic blueprint, which lays out, um, areas for different rates, where meters should be and not be. So, we have that to guide our work in the future.
Okay. Any ingenious ideas here, Commissioner Cooney?
My hope is that we can think through a better way to do all this street work so that we don't have this going on for the next eight or 10 years, that we can find a different way to manage it. I don't have any idea what that is now, but if we, if we hear businesses telling us that they're going out of business and laying people up, we can't let that continue. We have to find a different way to do this. And I'm hoping that we can come up with this, um, not tonight, but you know what we went through to get a grocery store on the North Side. We cannot let that fail.
Agreed.
We have to find a different way to do that.
So, I agree with you 100%. But just getting back to what I said before, pumpkin's got nothing to do with that.
No, it doesn't.
No, not with that. I agree with you that that is an issue, no doubt. So, what our response is gonna be, I'm not entirely sure. I think we gotta think about it creatively. I know the City Manager's Office is already thinking about it, you know, with, with the team. So, I agree with you on that. This is kind of, and that's that. So, we're not gonna let that go, right?
What I'm saying, we have to come to the same thing with downtown. We have to come up with some kind of plan to allow the-
Yeah, right. So, so that said, I mean, if everything, absent the mess with the streets, maybe this parking thing wouldn't be such a big issue. I think it's likely, maybe it wouldn't. You know, we're talking about having increased rates for whatever, 10 years. We're talking about a quarter for an hour. Talking about extending some hours here and there. I mean, it wouldn't be such a big thing. But there's a lot of angst about it when you just kind of dump it in with the fact that all the street work's happening and we don't have an answer for all that yet. So, that, that all said, I, I don't want, I think it's unfortunate if we blend these things too deeply, uh, related to, you know, the series of recommendations about some parking adjustments. Would it be helpful if we, in some ways, sliced these up a little bit more and came back with it so we could have vote on a, two or three different items rather than have it be a package? Well, I'll, I'll tell you what, then. Let's go ahead. You know, I usually try, you know, I try to work through like, where are we at? Let's work together and that kind of thing. But maybe at this point, a clair- clarity just comes from, let's have a vote. We got a motion on the floor. We'll just vote on the package and then, Commissioner Prado?
I just, I, I wonder, uh, and I think this, it, just listening to everybody, it sounds like Commissioner Decker and Commissioner Wilson, it sounds like for, if I'm understanding correctly, for both of you, it's more about timing. And on the merits of everything that's here, do you think this is the right thing to do, whether it's today or tomorrow? I guess that's my question. And do you feel like, if, if you feel like it's the right thing to do, could you live with doing it now? Or is it kind of like a non-negotiable thing? Because to me, that's kind of where I see things sitting. And I, I'm just kind of curious because I feel like, from what I'm listening to everybody, it seems like if, if there's gonna be a shift, I'm just doing the math in my head with everybody here. And if there's not a shift with one of you, then this isn't gonna pass tonight, you know? And so, I guess my question is, is like, you know, yeah.
For me, it's the vagueness, you know, like, like we all agree on certain aspects of this, but it's the ambiguity and the vagueness and some of those other things, like operational hours could increase, you know, as early as tomorrow. But, you know, we're planning over the next years for this to happen, you know? Um, it's, it's, so, yeah. It's, for me, it's a no for today because of all the, because of the vagueness in those aspects.
Uh, I believe for me, it's more of, you know, I hear our downtown businesses and I know what this gonna, how this will affect their business, um, in a good way. It's just the timing. I mean, if we don't have to do anything, I mean, really, if, if we don't have to do anything to put these meters up downtown, let's put them up and leave them at $1.25. But then again, we hear that we-
Dollar 75.
Sorry, $1.75. Um, but then there's other certain things within other ordinances that have to happen in order for that to happen, which is being able to say, we can put this type of box here. Um, that's really what it is for me. Uh, and, and again, also the contract, the construction and what Commissioner Hoffman said about people that, I know a lot of people that work down here too, um, and that come. And I just think an extra $2 could really impact somebody. A lot of people may not think that. Talk about Alice, that could be the difference between a half a gallon of milk, you know? It's just, I, I feel like there's just way too much happening, as I said, within the downtown area. But if we can figure out a way, maybe if we need to come back to the table and, you know, Christina's team can rework something, I do believe, yes, that the, uh, the meters should be downtown. Because again, that is ridiculous if someone goes down there and parks off all day. And you've got all these businesses that aren't able to get information and you don't have the parking that's on the side of the road that people can get to. Um, the overnight parking, I, after hearing more and doing a little bit more reading, I, I do like the overnight parking aspect of it because it is going to charge these individuals that are living downtown, um, to be able to park their car down there, you know, if they have a car. Uh, and also, you know, to be able to have gas. I do think that is a good thing, that is a good revenue for the city. I just think that right now, the time is not right.
For the overnight? Which part of it is not, the time is not right? I'm sorry. Allowing overnight parking?
Well, I, I believe putting in the, changing the rates.
The rates.
Even though it is a quarter. For the overnight parking, I believe that, for that, I mean, I look at the big area here. I mean, what if, we've got people that work overnight at some of these hotels downtown, you know? That's 80-something dollars a month, something like that.
And right now, they can't park on the street at all because they got a ticket between 2:00 and 6:00, right?
Right. $86 parking monthly versus $15 ticket.
Every night? Christina?
If I may, um, there are two, two buckets of information or two, two, we could separate it this way. And I don't know if we can do it tonight, if it's something that you would want us to revise and come back. We have the three ordinances that relate to overnight parking, right? The per, the, the allowing of it, the setting up the permit system and the violations. We could have those up in a package with a resolution that'll create the fee structure for the overnight parking permit system. And so, that would be one piece. We could come back with that one piece. The ordinance that talks about, that has all the housekeeping, uh, and looks at hours, we can do that one on its own. And we can do the resolution for the overall rate, not overnight parking, uh, have a resolution that is just focused on that and give the commission the opportunity to discuss it in those separate pieces, if that would be helpful. And I would rely on, um, the city attorney to understand if we could break those up. Um, you know, we'd be changing the resolution, although the resolution is always just a one-meeting item, so that would not kind of restart our conversation back. Um, so I don't know if that proposal is appropriate.
The, the way to, I see where you're going and the way to get there is for the commission, and this is gonna get into Robert's Rules of Order, but to pass a superior motion to postpone this item for future date certain to allow Christina and Assistant Attorney, Assistant City Attorney Charlie Bear to break up this ordinances. What, they are bringing something back to you, but breaking it up to address some of the concerns tonight. That way, it would continue, there wouldn't be a need for, to start the process all over again.
Attorney Liao, do the, the individual that made the motion to take this action and supported it, do they have to redraw that?
Under Robert's Rules of Order, a motion to postpone is a superior motion, that meaning that if it's made, seconded and voted upon, it'll automatically distinguish the inferior motion, which is the motion to approve. I, that is, that is the way under Robert's Rules of Order is done. Another way that is commonly done by many city commissions is for the withdrawal of a motion and also the assent to withdraw from the person who seconded. That's the other way.
Inclination, team? It's now your chance to make a superior motion. That doesn't happen very often, so.
I'm sorry. I am a member of the National Association of Parliamentarians. This stuff we, we read and do.
Glad we could let you exercise that parliamentarian.
So, so we have an option to, to-
Mayor.
File the recommendation of our attorney to, to, uh, propose a superior motion that would allow some separation, uh, to occur on this group of ordinances come together and postpone it to date certain our next meeting. Is that accurate?
The, the, the timing, I guess I would rely on Christina again to bring it back. It could be your August 12th meeting or your second meeting in August. It really depends on how much time staff will need to do all that drafting. Now, they have to deconstruct and then reconstruct a new ordinance and resolution for you. So, I, I have to rely on, on staff.
Attorney Liao, do we need a date certain in a superior motion, though?
Yes, a date certain, which would be August 12th, or I don't know the date of the second meeting in August. Then the 12th. The 12th is the recommendation from, from staff. So, it would be a motion to postpone this item to make the cha- to a date certain, which is, is 12, to allow staff to make the necessary changes as discussed by the commission this evening.
Thank you, Attorney Liao. Is anyone willing, uh, to make that motion? Okay, Commissioner Cooney, is there support for that motion?
Support.
Support. Discussion on that motion?
I still feel like we're gonna pass the ordinances. Or will they be different as they come on August 12?
They will be in a different form. There will be ordinances, but it'll be ordinances consistent with your discussion from this evening.
Okay.
It'll be, they'll look different.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Pradel?
One of my concerns, I guess, is people are evaluating this before the 12th is just how this impacts the ninety-minute free parking because that is an access point for people right now if they want to come downtown. And so depending on how that impacts the, the, I guess, the, has the fiscal impact.
Ninety minutes on the ramp.
Yeah, I mean, if, because my understanding was, is like, some of this was to offset those expenses to offer the ninety-minute parking to residents. And so, you know, I'm, my concern is, is like, however this comes back, that it might unintentionally cause more harm because the one thing that's actually free right now for ninety minutes might either get reduced in time or might get eliminated altogether.
Yeah, I think the intent is to keep the ninety minutes free in the ramps.
But how are we going to pay for that?
Well, that's part of this whole plan that we're laying out, so.
Right. And so that's my concern is just that it's going to, the money's going to have to come from somewhere.
Right.
You know, and if we're not raising rates, but we're still offering the ninety-minute free parking, it's going to have to come from somewhere and I'm concerned about where, or I'm concerned about, are we going to lose out on having a free option for people, you know, when we walk away from this?
Yeah, your point is well taken and we'll take that into consideration when we bring this back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Other discussion on this superior motion? Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
On the motion to postpone, Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
No.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
No.
Mayor Anderson?
No.
Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, commissioners, the motion passes. All right, well, now we're going to start talking about some real big money. Seventy-five million over the course of the next four ordinances, so here we go. Manager Ritzma.
Item H seven is adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of wastewater supply system revenue bonds, series 2024, for an amount not to exceed fourteen million dollars and adopt, adoption of a notice of sale resolution. And our CFO, Steve Asensys, here, he's going to just give a brief overview on items seven, eight, nine, and ten, as they're all related to bond issuances.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm just going to kind of quickly go over this. We approved the notice of intent for these bonds back in February as part of our budget process. These, all the amounts you see here were included in our budget that was approved back in January. We approved the notice of intent in February. There's a petition period of forty-five days after their notice of intent for the public to put together a petition. None were filed with the city, so we are screen clear to move forward with authorizing the bonds. And just kind of as a reminder, you know, these are also included in the utility rates that were approved at the beginning of the year as well, so there's no changes to utility rates. All of that is part of the plan that we've been activating throughout the year. And these bonds will pay for our utility capital plan, our streets capital plans, our general fund, including parks, facility improvements, you know, public safety equipment and other public service equipment as well. So just a brief overview of kind of where we are, and this is all in line with everything we've been doing up until this point.
Questions for staff at this time from commission? All right, seen none. Now, so I wonder if I missed something? Did I have to ask for people to comment on that last motion before we voted on it? Attorney Lial? The superior motion? Well, if I was supposed to, I missed it, so it's too late.
No, you didn't, but it's not the type of motion that would require the public comment. It is not because the final, the public comment is associated with a, with an action item that is, is going to be voted upon. This was not an, the motion is not an action item, it's a procedural item.
All right, thank you, appreciate that very much. All right, so what we have in front of us here then is item H seven, which is the ordinance authorizing the issuance of wastewater supply system revenue bonds, correct? And now is the opportunity for anyone who's here in the chambers to comment on this item. Seen no one. Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to adopt the ordinance and resolution. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pradel. Discussion, commissioners? Seen none? Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, the motion passes. Next on the agenda is item H eight. Manager Ritzma.
Adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of water supply system revenue refunding bonds, series 2024, in the amount of thirty-three million dollars and to adopt a notice of sale resolution.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Are there any questions for staff from commission? Seen none. Is there anyone in the audience here in the chambers like to comment on this item? It's item H eight. Please come forward. Seen no comments. The recommended action is a motion to adopt the ordinance and resolution. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Decker.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pradel. Discussion, commissioners?
I feel guilty not discussing things when it's this much money, but I, since we already knew this was coming, I, you know, I just noticed the gravity of this much money.
Yes. Yes, well said. Okay, Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, the motion passes. Next is item H nine. Manager Ritzma.
Adoption of an ordinance authorizing water supply system revenue bonds, series 2024B, in an amount not to exceed nineteen million dollars.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from commission on this item? Seen none. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this item? Seen no comments. The recommended action is a motion to adopt the ordinance. Is there a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Cooney?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion, commissioners? Seen none. Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, the motion passes. Next, H ten. Manager Ritzma.
Adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed nine-point-two million dollars for the purpose of financing fiscal year 2024 capital projects.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Any questions for staff on this particular item? Seen none. Is there anyone here in the chambers who'd like to comment on item H ten? Seen no one. The recommended action is a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a motion?
Support.
Motion made by Commissioner Cooney, supported by Commissioner Decker. Any further discussion? Seen none. Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, the motion passes. Next, reports and legislation. City Manager Ritzma, do you have a report?
Yeah, I just wanted to address the concerns that were raised earlier about four hours ago, three, three hours ago, about the street construction and impacts on businesses. Just to let you know that we are aware of what the concerns are. We are working on several aspects of this through, through media, through marketing, and the shuttle was started up for the Park Street Market this past weekend, and that'll continue through, or August.
Hard to read that six-point type, isn't it?
Yeah. Through the middle of August. I don't see the data on here, but, and we're also going to be reaching out to the businesses. I know Director Mitchell reached out to the park owners of Park Street and Midtown Fresh to, to meet with them. The challenge we have, and you heard a couple of folks suggest financial support, that is a very slippery slope. One, if you're looking at the number of businesses potentially, there are thirty businesses alone along Westonage, and then if you start adding all the other streets we're impacting, you, you get to a big number really quickly. What, what we're, what we can do is look at other ways, like signage, all of the things we discussed. But as far as providing the actual financial support, we reached out to South Bend, who did their streets within like the sixteen to eighteen months. They didn't provide any support for businesses. Portage, the road commission, doesn't either. It's not that, you know, we're, we're just saying, no, you know, you're on your own. We really want to look at ways to help them, you know, with the means that we have. And so we'll continue to pursue that and I will keep the commission up to speed on, on those efforts and, and we can report out as, as we go along.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. We are now on our agenda at the time for commissioner comments. Anyone who would like to lead off with commissioner comments this evening? Commissioner Cooney?
Yes, I'd like to say a couple of things about Mothers of Hope. People know who Mothers of Hope are. This, this is an organization that was started by women who were addicts. And through the help of a doctor, I can't think of his name right now, but he, he worked with them and they were able to kick the habit. And they started an organization to, to help other people who were addicted in different ways. And every year for the last four years, this will be the fifth year, they have what they call an annual recovery walk in which they invite people that have managed to kick their addiction to come and celebrate. And other people who are trying to kick their addiction to come and celebrate. So this year, they're doing it in connection with the North Side Association for Community Development. And they wanted me to invite all the people at the dais and all the people from the community to join in the recovery walk, which is Saturday, April the third, August the third, at ten o'clock in the morning. And it's going to start at the NACD on the parking lot on 612 North Park Street. So just let people know about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I've been absent for a few meetings. I had some personal and family issues I had to deal with, but I want to give my team up here, I want to say thank you for the grace, for allowing me to do what I needed to do. My family's time in need. I want to give, I, I don't have their names right here, but they'll be getting a personal thank you for me. Chief Boyson, I just wanted to let you know that you, your team that responded to my home was awesome and, and I appreciate everything that they did. And a couple of things that are happening in the city. So on August second, we have the Inkster Bridge ribbon cutting at ten-thirty. Also something that we, the commission approved, was having the Cannabis Committee, so the Kalamazoo Cannabis Committee event is going to be tomorrow from five to seven PM at the library at 315 South Rose Street. And then we talk about the infrastructure of our streets. MDOT is actually going to have an open house and that is going to be at Millwood Elementary on July sixteenth also. That'll be from two-thirty to four-thirty, where you're able to sit there and talk with the individuals and you talk about the infrastructure and the bike lanes and things like that. I do want to let the individuals that were here and the businesses that were here know that we do hear you and, and we, we're going to do everything we can to help mitigate the traffic flow. I think City Manager Ritzma and Director Baker are already starting to plan some of those things out. I think the bus is an awesome idea, so hopefully if, if by chance we need to do that a little bit longer, then hopefully we can do that. And especially when we had our economic development strategy meeting today, I've said this a couple of times and I've been up here and I'm going to keep saying it, as I think about, again, I hear the residents talking about how everything's happening, you know, all at once. And for me, I think about what Director Baker already has started to do, which is his, you know, asset management process along his department, but you know, how can we align that and create a policy where it aligns it around all departments? So everyone is talking to each other. I think this way, we're going to be able to better plan for construction when things happen. We're going to know when things need to be fixed and we're not just waiting for, you know, good grants and, and money from the government. So I really believe us being able to, to, to really start to think about the services that our residents need and how we can really give them that, give them that service and the level of service that they would, that they desire and that we as a city government should be giving to them. So yeah, I'm glad to be back. I missed you guys. I miss doing the work that we do. And again, Commissioner Pradel, as you said, you know, we agree to disagree, but I believe in the end that, you know, we all come to a solution that's better for, for our community. I do want to thank Christine Anderson for sticking with us and answering our questions. I know it was difficult, but you know, we just, I, I won't speak for the, the commission here, but I personally, you know, I just had an issue with, you know, kind of raising rates and things like that and at this time, when we hear so many individuals struggling within our community because of the disparities of income and disparities of wealth. So we're working on it. Things will get better. I know they will and I believe they will.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Other comments from commissioners? Vice Mayor Hess?
Sure, just a few things. We don't have a meeting until August 12th now. You know, it's about another, because we don't have a meeting the night before an election on August fifth, so we don't meet until August 12th. So a lot of things are happening between now and August 12th. Our foam recycling has been changed to July 27th, ten to one at Mayor's Riverfront Park. The election is on August 6th. Thank you to Clerk Boiling and his staff for being so diligent and so thorough and so present with our election process. Also on August 6th are several national night outs in your neighborhoods, so get, get out there and get out with your neighborhoods, get out with your neighbors. On August 6th, the election, the Say Yes to Seniors Millage is, is going to be voted on and that's for all the seniors in Kalamazoo County. The 30th Annual Kalamazoo Blues Fest, 24, will be from one PM to 11:00 PM at Arcadia Festival site on July 27th. Come on out and let's sing the blues together, right? And the info for that is at kvba.org. Midtown Fresh, I was at that meeting where a lot of the, the business owners were at Midtown Fresh with that, Park Street Market, Victorian Bakery, so on, and, and heard their concerns. But I also learned, they said, did you know that city employees get a five percent discount at Midtown Fresh if you just show your ID? So five percent discount at Midtown Fresh. Hopefully that'll drive traffic to that particular grocery store. Did you know? And I really, I, I look forward to Manager Ritzma and the team coming up with creative ideas to solve the issues, short term and long term. We will all continue to support our local businesses, which I was doing on Friday night at the mall, the Kalamazoo Mall. I was, my husband and I were seated out at a table and someone who recognized me came up and said, there's a horrible leak on the mall. at a table, and someone who recognized me came up and said, there's a horrible leak on the mall, and it smells like sewer gas, and it did. And it was, it was bad, and I, it could have gotten worse, and put in a, a phone call to Director Baker and to Manager Ritzma, and within minutes. I wanna thank Sewer Supervisor Eric Lancaster for showing up on his Friday night, and it was, actually turned out to be a snowmelt system that was, that was leaking, and that was fixed and repaired on Friday night. So see something, say something. You know, there, if, if nothing else, call 311 during the day, but please feel free to reach out if there's issues in the city that you need, that you need to be addressed. So let's continue to address these together. I appreciate you, all my colleagues, and City Manager's office, and our city staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Pradel?
Can you just really quick, how awesome is it that you get seven people up here who can have a discussion, a debate about something, disagree, still have a lot of respect for each other? And you know, in a national scene where people can't seem to do that, right here in our hometown, we can show people that we can have these difficult conversations, get through it, and still make the city work, right? I really appreciate that, and I think it's especially important right now. Second thing, you know, in terms of what we can do to impact, it's all in our, largely all in our hands as individuals. If we have the capacity to do it, if we have a catered event at our church, at our, at our business, our nonprofits, we can cater, we can order things through these businesses, we can make a conscious choice to go out of our way, even if it's a little bit more difficult, or even if it costs a little bit more to support these folks, help get through this period, and so I would just implore community to do all we can, if you're able, to try to support these businesses that are really struggling right now, and, you know, it's just hard to imagine a community where we don't have people like Park Street Market, Midtown Fresh, Gazelle Sports, Victorian Bakery, Shwarma King, all these people who came here tonight. I mean, imagine a Calamazoo without those folks. It's hard to imagine that, and so we gotta show up for these people, and I implore the community to please show up. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. I know it's late, but I, I think it's one thing that's very, very important for us to know and for the community to know, and I, I will put this in the category of crisis, and, and that is that I have, through outside funding, we get an outreach team that is specifically assigned to connect with people who are not in the shelter system, who are unsheltered, who are not interested in, in receiving the services of shelter and the shelter system. So they spend a lot of time engaging with folks who are, you know, ma- making their way one way or another in an unsheltered fashion. And one of the things that we have been able to offer, because it were all, we, the things we regularly offer, which are often, there's a decision made not to take advantage of them, and those are things like mental health services and substance use disorder services. One thing we have been able to offer is to get people signed up for what's known as a homeless preference voucher. A homeless preference voucher is a standard, used to be called Section 8 Housing Choice voucher, but it was a category of housing choice vouchers that was preferred for people who were in shelter or a place not meant for human habitation. And that served as a carrot for our engagement, having those vouchers ostensibly be available. So I'm using the word ostensibly because there have been no pulls from that homeless present, homeless preference voucher list since almost a year ago, since August of last year. So not a single name has been pulled from the preference list for actual housing. In order to keep your name fresh on that list, however, you had to recertify every 120 days. If you, if you pass that 120 days, your name just disappeared from the list. You'd have to start all over again. But if you recertified your status of being, you know, not having permanent housing within a 120-day period, that kept your name on that list, even though it is frankly seemed futile. But that was one thing my team has been doing, is refreshing those lists all the time. So the official communication just came out a couple weeks ago that the process of recertifying people on that list has ended. No more recertifications, period. So that just means everyone's name's on the list will disappear from that list sooner or later. And in addition, there will be no pulls from any list, housing choice voucher list, homeless preference list, at least until April or May of next year. No pulls whatsoever, not a single voucher. And in addition, used to be that someone lost their voucher, for whatever reason, maybe started making too much money, maybe unfortunately was involved in illegal activity, got evicted, lost their voucher, maybe passed away. That opened up a voucher that could be available to somebody else. Those vouchers are, that is no longer occurring. Every voucher that someone loses is just a voucher down. They will not be refilling any empty vouchers. Now, this is all, all the vouchers that we have, those, really it's like a coupon that you can carry in your pocket. I'm not talking about the, the housing assistance you might get if you leave in a place that has a subsidy attached to it. For example, State Drive Apartments has subsidies attached to it. A whole variety of other places do. I'm not talking about those. I'm talking about these portable vouchers that you can literally demonstrate to a landlord, hey, I'm gonna get some rental assistance. I will be paying a portion of this rent that's affordable to me, and the rest will be paid through this voucher. Well, no replacement. So the, our local contractor who manages those vouchers that come from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, MISTDA, is now in, they've dropped back, and they're in retention mode. They're trying their best to keep everyone that currently has a voucher from losing that voucher. So that's what's going on right now. So, you know, you know, I, I don't know whether this can happen or not. I mean, there has not been any discussion in the national conversation, this has come after election, about what we're gonna do, but I can tell you, that is something that is gonna affect the entire state of Michigan. Happens to be state-based, that's where they come from. But that means that, that is a resource that now is gone. So what is available? Well, people are either gonna have to just literally start making enough money so they can afford the rent on their own, or move out of state, or live in a shelter, that sort of thing. So that, I mean, is a crisis. And I, I think it's not entirely clear. I mean, that's been out. I don't know if it's universally understood. I know for a fact, Commissioner Decker, that you were aware of that, but that announcement just came out. So it, it's really limiting to what you can do when you're out there doing that work, and what are you gonna do? Give someone a bottle of water, and, you know, I, I don't know. But it is a crisis, and this will, you know, do nothing but contribute to that crisis. Very, very unfortunate. One other thing I just wanted to talk about from this space, and, and that is this, that, you know, we talked about up here, you know, even working through challenging situations without denigrating each other. And, you know, however you feel about the candidates in this election, you know, there was an assassination attempt that occurred very recently, and I can tell you that, I mean, I've heard some jokes about it, which are 100% inappropriate, making any kind of remark about that. That, that is not how we intend to decide things in this country by, you know, removing a candidate, for example. And so I know that, I just wanna make very clear, I know I get to work, you know, with a bunch of great people here who put themselves at risk, and sometimes people are not happy with every single one of us on some particular thing that guests decided. There are oftentimes not perfect decisions that get made up here, and sometimes we can even be frustrated about that. But, you know, we are all in public. Thank you for, all of you, for stepping up and kind of taking that public role, and I know that now when you're out, maybe in a parking lot or whatever, people will stop and say, hey, I don't want this, or I'm totally opposed to that, and they will catch you when you're out and about. You are public figures now. And I just wanna say that this is so important for all of us, and for us, to, to recognize the importance of continuing to have dialogue and engage with each other in a way that, despite the situation, that a way is going to not devolve into, you know, a, a situation where things are settled by violence. Anyway, so that's, that's that about that. Appreciate you, love you. City Calamazoo, we're adjourned.